Good evening and welcome to the May 8, 2023 Board of Education meeting. The meeting is now called to order. First order of business is to appoint a Board Secretary Pro Tem. As provided in the agenda pertinent facts, it is recommended that Vice President Cindy Garlock be appointed to serve as Board Secretary Pro Tem for this evening's board meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, May 8, 2023 Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Hume, Director Merschbach, Director Roundtree, Director Humbles, Director Borcheting, President Tominski, Vice President Garlock, aye.
Tonight, we have a public hearing for fiscal year 2023 budget amendment. Board Secretary Pro Tem Garlock, have we received any written correspondence related to the public hearing on tonight's agenda?
No, we have not.
Do we have anyone who has requested to address the board this evening regarding the published hearing?
No, we have not.
The public hearing is officially closed. Next is a very special event for members of the board. It is our distinct pleasure to recognize Cedar Rapids Community School District staff who have reached a milestone in their career with us. To get us started, I'll turn the meeting over to Deputy Superintendent Quaker for the introduction of our staff.
I would like to invite the Board of Directors down at this time. The Cedar Rapids Community School District and the Foundation are proud to honor the following employees for their 25, 30, 35, and 40 years of continuous service to the district. The board, the foundation, and the district appreciate immensely the efforts of our employees, especially those who have contributed many years of service. Some of the recipients who have achieved these milestones are present this evening. All of the recipient names will be read so they may be recognized for their years of service. Thank you to each and every employee for their commitment and dedication to the Cedar Rapids Community School District, and we will start with the 25-year employees. We have Kara Osmerson, Lori Bateman, Kristy Bell, Diane Blythe, Deanne Brown, Julie Kane, Deanna Kamahan, Catherine Kader, Catherine Cervantes, Lori Klor, Christopher Cruz, Mary Cruz, Stacy Dale, Cheryl Deutsch, Roger Drellow, Shannon Ellis, Christine Engel, Kaya Escobedo, John Graham, Courtney Green, Melissa Harz, Brenda Harrington, Lynette Hauser, Craig Heepker, Cindy Hutchinson, Brian Jeffords, Stephanie Lewis, Beth Mead, Curtis Packer Bear, Stephen Peterson, Joseph Pettit, Tamara Pollak, Ted Poole, Rebecca Polica, Tara Rust, Stephen Probert, Tammy Scott, Terri Smith, and Catherine Stapleton. Now for our 30 years of service. We start with Jean Ash, Judith Bruins, Ken Charper, Nick Daniel, Molly Donahue, Cindy Freeze, Heather Hazlitt, Susan Holton, Suzanne Jennings, Tammy Conzen, Arice Colbert, Kathleen Lanott, John McDonald, Deborah Palmer, Chad Zabo, Carrie Thompson, and Cheryl T. Luskey Marsh, and also Suzanne Jennings, for 35 years of service. We have Dr. Jim Dostal, Kath- Katherine Fritz, Amy Hannish, and also Karen Pink. Forty years of service is next. Forty years. Joseph Benedict. Timothy Catmire and Steve Wallace. Just give them all a hand. Thank you so much to all of our employees for their years of service. We really appreciate it.
Well, tonight is all about recognition, and I have the privilege to support our Board of Education in recognizing them tonight. Each year, the Iowa Association of School Boards designates the month of May as a time to show support and provides a relevant theme for school boards. This year's theme is "Developing Iowa's Future Together." In recognition of our CRCSD School Board of Directors, the members of the Executive Council would like to take a moment to honor and recognize our support for our CRCSD School Board members. Many of them will be joining me in the foyer shortly. Over the past year, our board members were faced with challenges and decisions no one could have anticipated. They engaged in complex discussions and made heartfelt choices that ultimately led to decisions which impact the student, staff, and school community while keeping student achievement and educational equity as their primary focus. In a normal year, these unpaid volunteers worked diligently to ensure schools provide the best education possible for Iowa's future citizens. During the past year, they persevered and led through uncharted waters to make critical decisions without having a map to navigate these challenges. As so eloquently stated by the IASB, "Board members are locally elected, non-salaried, public officials entrusted with the task of providing a direction for the education of students across Iowa." The Board of Education is uniquely, is a uniquely American institution dating from the earliest days of our country. It has made public schools flexible and responsive to the local community needs. Today, public schools are being asked to raise the bar of academic achievement while remaining good stewards of the public's investment in education. Board members pull together as a team toward a common goal, helping every learner be future-ready here in our district. While they may individually disagree on certain issues, their role as a board is to consistently strive toward that goal. During this year, we can attest the amount of dedication our school board members continue to have for Cedar Rapids Community School District. It is an honor and a privilege to serve you. On behalf of the members of the Executive Council, our district, and our community, thank you so much for what you do for our students each and every day.
Next up is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Grober, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, well, we've already started out with the celebration, so I'd like to continue that here for a moment. May is a month of celebration. We have a total of 1,209 certified teachers in our district. Our teachers and staff deserve appreciation and celebration for not only this week, but always. Our students' lives and futures depend on these heroes to show up to work every day and give their best. So please help me celebrate all of our teachers across the district as we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week. A most sincere thank you to everyone. We are continuing our listening tours. I do want to thank all of our staff members who have participated. We are down to our last two. Wow, what a run. And I just want to also mention that while these locations are at Hiawatha and Grant, if any school or any part of our district, wherever you are, you can attend the listening sessions. So far, along with our survey, we have collected 500 responses online, and a number of different people have shown up to the in-person listening sessions as well. As you may know, our current strategic plan has run its five-year course. The information from these sessions and the survey is starting to give us some concepts that we will consider as we revise our strategic plan to go forward. Furthermore, I do want to point out that I will be out with our student groups from our high schools here, and I think I start this week, actually. And also, I look to be able to engage with our parents over the summer. So just maybe a quick little review of 30 days into serving you. As your interim superintendent, I think I just passed 30 days, and we cannot wait another day to continue to start working collaboratively together to be able to address what we view as our opportunities here in the school district. It will take all of us to be that beam of hope as we strive to be a lighthouse district for others. Tonight, you will hear some information from us that will let you know that we're not waiting to start. We will present on recruitment and retention, which we know is important to our staff as well as our board. We have hired some key leadership positions and more underway. We have been faced with budget issues that we continue to work towards together so that we can continue to serve our students. I've had a wealth of information provided to help me understand how our system is built and how we respond to be efficient as well as inclusive to all of our staff. So thank you all so much for this opportunity. My goal is to use the foundation that we see here with the passion of our staff that already exists to be able to propel us forward. A few priorities that are rising to the top include internal communication, and we are, we have a strong team here. They are already making strides to improve internal communications, such as the implementation of their internal newsletter. We are also looking at our decision-making processes and comprehensive system thinking, and again, how we increase diversity within our district. These are, of course, below our number priority of, our number one priority of student achievement. And other ways that we can celebrate, as I conclude tonight, I want to say thank you to the Cedar Rapids Community Schools Foundation for the 2023 series of Senior Walks. This annual tradition allows seniors to walk down memory lane before they walk across the stage to receive their diplomas. Additionally, it is a great time to wish our seniors well. This is an exciting time filled with rites of passages. I want to share the class of 2023's graduation schedule. Please note, and you can find this information on their website, along with ours. Metro High School graduation will be Wednesday, May 24th at 7:00 PM at the Double Tree by Hilton. Washington High School will be on Thursday, May 25th at 7:00 PM at Alliant Energy Powerhouse. Jefferson High School will be on Friday, May 26th, same location, 7:00 PM, the Alliant Energy Powerhouse. And finally, Kennedy High School will be Saturday, May 27th at 7:00 PM, same location. We look forward to joining all of our high schools to celebrate their accomplishments. We are so proud of our graduates and excited for their future. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you for the report. Are there any board reports? Director Garlock?
Yeah, excuse me, just a brief legislative update. The Iowa Legislature adjourned last Thursday, so the session is over for, for this year. The only new legislation that we haven't previously noted was the property tax bill, which, which passed and was signed by the governor. One part of that property tax legislation prescribes that school bond issues can only take place on the date of the November election, which will, of course, impact us as we consider a bond issue in our, in our future. So, other than that, the session is over, so hopefully you won't have to listen to me again.
Any other board reports?
Well, I would just share that President Tominski and myself were able to present along with some team members at IASB's Student Success Session Program, and I think about Magna Schools, and I think it went really well, it was well-received, and I think we'll be hearing a little bit more about that later.
Agreed. Thanks to the team that assisted with that. Next, we'll hear from those who have requested to address the board. Cindy, do we have any members of the public that have requested to address the board?
Yes, we do.
How many speakers do we have signed up for public comment?
We have 17 speakers.
With 17 speakers this evening, you will each be given three minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Director Garlock will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the board and choose not to speak, in the interest of equity and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. In order to abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individuals speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speakers that the board is unable to address personnel and student matters. There is a process outlined in board policy which provides guidance on how to address and resolve concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to please state your name and address for the record when called to the podium. Cindy, please call our first speaker.
Our first speaker is Jenna Breckenridge, and the topic is filed complaint.
Jenna Breckenridge, 1190 Lindhurst Drive, Hiawatha, Iowa, 52233. This is in regards to a complaint that I filed that has not been handled. A few weeks ago, my son walked into a classroom where a teacher was talking about him. Okay, I adopted my son, I adopted three boys from Ukraine. He has cleft palate. He was not accepted there. We almost weren't able to bring him home because the court thought we wanted him for his organs, okay? So I bring him to America for a better life, and this is what the teacher says to him. Well, he asked why she was saying his name, and she said, in front of all these other students, that we, we were talking about you, we wanted to know how old you were, what your last name was, asking you how many brothers you had. She asked him how many siblings he had, and he told her he had five brothers. She said, no, real brothers from Ukraine. My son stated three. She stated, she replied and asked if they were his blood brothers. He told her, no, that only the twins that we adopted were blood brothers. She said, those are not your real brothers, and your biological, or my husband, my biological, biological boys are not his brothers. She made a comment that he was ugly and that the only reason why he's here in America is because we gotta buy two, get one free. I have addressed this, or she also asked him if he made it out of Ukraine before the war broke out, or after. And he started getting teary-eyed, and she came up behind him and started hugging on him and made him uncomfortable. I addressed this issue on the 20th. I filed a complaint, I went through all the motions, I met with the principal and the teacher. The teacher actually called me the day before we were supposed to meet and wanted to discuss things today for her own peace of mind and settle things. We had a meeting scheduled this is the following day and never called her back. On April 25th, I met with the principal and the teacher, where the teacher admitted to everything. Everything. Sorry. And nothing has been resolved to this point. I asked this to be passed along whoever oversaw the principal and was put in contact with executive director of the middle school, who told me his plan was to ensure the teacher knows not to attempt to contact my son and identify a trusted adult for my son for when he is feeling uncomfortable about the presence of this teacher and a written apology. So let me get this straight. My son can't trust this teacher? That should be a trusted adult.
Excuse me, Jenna, your time is up. Our next speaker is Don Taylor, speaking about the Harrison Elementary School.
Don Taylor, 2225 River Bluff Drive, Northwest Cedar Rapids, Iowa. I was here the last meeting talking about the need to be concerned about kids first. I think the final decision kept that in mind, and I, and I appreciate the fact that there's going to be a Harrison, or there's going to be an elementary school where Harrison is now. In a perfect world, I would love to see it be an addition to Harrison, keep the old Harrison there. In a perfect world, I'd like to see it called Harrison. Why? Simply, I went there, I'm from here, that's, you know, that's, and I'm a history teacher, so, you know, go figure. However, there's a more important issue aside from the kids, and that's the neighborhood itself. I'm here representing the Northwest Neighborhood Board of Directors. I'm here representing Trinity St. James, United Methodist Church, and we work with Harrison. And while it would be nice to live in a perfect world, it would be devastating if there wasn't a school where Harrison is. I don't care if it's called Harrison or not, I don't, the fact that you, you set aside $700,000 to, to take some of the pieces of Harrison and put it into this new building is good for me. As long as the mural's still around, as long as those windows are still around, I'm good to go. That, that, that's enough for me, as long as there's a school in our neighborhood. Without that school, we can't revitalize this neighborhood. The neighborhood needed to be revitalized before the flood, but it hasn't been revitalized since. The city hasn't done much, they haven't, they put up, they put up floods, flood protection everywhere except the northwest side. So I'm concerned about the neighborhood itself. We can't revitalize if we don't have young people with kids, and we have to have that school in that neighborhood for that to happen. Like I said, in a perfect world, I'd love to see the building be restored and, and added on to and, and have it work that way. That's clearly not the way it's, it, it was decided, and quite, quite honestly, I wasn't, I don't know enough information, obviously, to say whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, because I didn't, I wasn't involved in the final decision. I was only involved in the study group, and the study group wanted to keep Harrison. As far as I'm concerned, having a building there- As far as I'm concerned, having a building there, whether it's a new building or it's Harrison, is still having a school in our neighborhood. And to the people I represent, my church, my Northwest Neighborhood Organization, it's critical that we have a building there, it's critical that we have a school in that neighborhood.
Excuse me, Don, your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Stubblefield, and she's speaking on the Harrison Elementary decision.
Mary Stubblefield, 1143 O. Avenue Northwest. I am a mother of a fifth grader at Harrison Elementary, and I'm also a mother of three children who finished there. Over the past fourteen years, I have spent countless hours volunteering and giving my time to Harrison. For the second time in those fourteen years, I was just recently been acknowledged as Outstanding Building Volunteer of the Year for that school. I believe in putting time into the community is important, but I also believe when I see a wrong being done, I need to speak up, and hopefully I can help maybe persuade some minds to put that wrong and make it right. Tearing Harrison down, I think, is one of those wrongs. The history happened here, a sign in front of Harrison, and part of it describes how it's the second building in that site for, or the second Harrison building, and it was built in 1929, 1930, due to a fire of the original Harrison building. It was done for elementary school by a Cedar Rapids architect. Harrison is many, one of many schools that have that history, happened here, a sign in front of it. It was also featured on the cover of Time Magazine on November 14th, 1988, when a Harrison teacher, Carol Bowen, was interviewed. So, it's been shown nationally because of its beautiful architecture. Following the '08 flood, we were able to save Harrison not being closed, and during 2014, a ten-year PEPAL levy was voted on and passed. That $700,000, that was earmarked for Harrison, only $355,000 have been used over the past eight years. There's $345,000 left of my tax money go to towards Harrison that isn't slated for Harrison right now. The board recently rejected the decision of the volunteer subcommittee who chose to renovate Harrison and decide that based on a community survey, Harrison should be torn down, and bricks and other salvageable materials used to build a new school on the current site was in order to save a million dollars. What was so groundbreaking about that community survey results, that it was discussed internally, costs were decided, and then it was voted on by the school board? I'm not a architect nor builder, but one of the selling points for choosing to have Harrison remodeled was because it was one of the oldest elementaries in the school district. In a 2017 Gazette article, it was even described as an architectural gem among all Cedar Rapids elementary schools. Excuse me. I would like you to please reconsider your decision in tearing down Harrison and improving the volunteer subcommittee's recommendation to remodel it. The sentiment to slow down, the decision to tear down Harrison, was also echoed this weekend in a May 6th editorial by the Gazette entitled Gather More Input on Harrison. You talked about a $312 million bond vote coming up soon for your middle school and high school. I believe that people here to support Harrison and people in the community feel that the district has already broken promises on what you're going to do with Harrison, when we were told it wasn't going to be torn down. I hope that your decision to tear down Harrison doesn't make you lose the $312 million vote.
Thank you, Mary. Our next speaker is Lawrence Winklowski, and he will be speaking on transparency processes and procedures.
Casey's, remember, I'm Lawrence Winklowski, 4234 Marrow Road. I've got to change my topic. Anyway, I'd like to also comment on Harrison School. I have no skin in the game. It doesn't affect me what happened, whether you keep it or that, it doesn't affect me. My problem is the way everything transpired, and that. What are, were the processes and procedures for that committee? I would have thought that through this process, it would have been always going through the committee before it goes to the school board. It didn't, and that someone all of a sudden threw an audible, and we changed it. What made it even worse was the fact that the school board just went along with that audible, and that, and you ended up disrespecting people who worked hard on a committee, and you should never disrespect the volunteers. What was the, you know, what is the minimum amount of time that we provide the public before we have a public hearing? A few days ain't enough. There should be a limit, and it should be in stone, and that's what should be, we should follow. You know, we keep doing the same thing over and over with this stuff, and, you know, it's got to stop. The school board makes the agenda. We don't have to follow the one from the Iowa Association of School Boards, or continue using the one that's been used for the eighteen years I've been coming to school board meetings. It's insane. The school board needs to have a format that provides more transparency and give people a better voice. You should come in here, when you want a public hearing, present the facts of the topic, let the comment, people comment, you discuss it and vote on it, all the same thing. It works out so many, so much better that way. I've seen it at city council meetings, I talk to you about this, and you're not willing to try that. That's probably the one thing that really bothers me, because we wouldn't accept that in any of our schools, people not willing to try something different. Please, try something different. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. Our next speaker is Christine Lehman EngleDow, speaking about Be Smart.
Hi, my name is Christine Lehman EngleDow, and I live at 1635 140th Street Northwest in Swisher, Iowa. Okay, ten years ago, a little more than ten years ago, all of us were glued to the news of the Sandy Hook Elementary School shootings. We never wanted to live through such a horrific day again. Sadly, scenes of families waiting to hear the fate of their children outside school buildings have been repeated over and over. Memorials of flowers and candles continue to spring up outside schools as community members gather in disbelief. Parents and guardians look around with increasing fear at the inability to control these events. Since then, Moms Demand Action, every town for gun sense in America, and every town for gun safety began to provide resources, research, and programs helping communities organizing, organize around the idea of ensuring gun safety. I was a member of Moms Demand Action in Iowa City. I wondered why Cedar Rapids did not have a chapter, and then the Parkland shootings happened. The next day, I volunteered at a school where my daughter teaches art to elementary school children. She had rearranged the classroom so the kids could escape out the windows, and had to tell all the children from kindergarten through fifth grade what to do if a bad guy came in the building. I was horrified to hear her tell us this to such little children. Then I started the Cedar Rapids chapter of Moms Demand Action. While my feelings are my own, this sentiment is echoed across the country. Nearly half of parents surveyed in the United States worry about their children getting shot. Our national organization developed a five-step program about gun safety for parents and guardians called Be Smart. This is a movement that is growing across the nation. Districts in many states, and even Iowa City, have resolved to share the Be Smart message with parents and guardians. Tonight, I would like to urge the Cedar Rapids Community School District to give parents and guardians a common language and proven strategies that ensure greater safety for all our students and community. We are here tonight to offer our expertise and help ensure that our town takes similar action and never sees a day like we saw at Columbine, Newtown, Parkland, Uvalde, and so many others. And just so you know, what we gave you in the folder has all the references for everything our group is going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Our next speaker is Luann Byerly, speaking about Be Smart.
Luann Byerly, 2435 25th Avenue, Marion, Iowa. I'm a retired teacher and administrator, and that's why this is important to me. The impact of school shootings and incidents of gun violence covered in the media never ceases to alarm us, and is all too familiar as families and schools in the aftermath of a tragic and largely preventable incident. As gun sales surged in 2020, the issue of gun violence in schools continued to concern many people in our community, leaving many with feelings of helplessness. But we can take action together to keep our schools safer. First, let me share some facts about gun violence in schools. In 2022, there were at least 177 incidents of gunfire on school grounds in the United States, resulting in 57 deaths and 148 injuries. And so far in 2023, there have been at least 44 incidents of gunfire on school grounds, resulting in 19 deaths and 33 injuries. As well as the mass shootings we see on the news, gun violence in schools includes homicides, assaults, unintentional discharges, self-harm injuries, suicide attempts, and suicide deaths. While mass shootings in schools are rare and account for less than 1% of school gunfire incidents, they account for 20% of school deaths in schools in the last 10 years. All of the school-aged shooters involved in mass shootings were current or former students. 96% in self-harm incidents and 91% in unintentional discharges of a gun were current or former students. Overall, 60% of school-aged shooters were current or former students. In 100% of incidents of targeted school violence, there were warning signs that caused others to be concerned. In 77% of incidents, other people were aware of the shooter's plans. Research suggests that 75% of shooters on school grounds under the age of 18 obtained the guns they used from their home, or the homes of their relatives, or their friends. In April 2021, approximately 30 million children lived in households with firearms. The same study estimated 4.6 million children lived in a household with at least one gun that was stored loaded and unlocked. Another study of five- to 14-year-old children showed that 79% of the older children and 73% of the younger children knew where that unsecured firearm was stored. We know the threat of gun violence at school negatively affects student learning, and we also know that gun violence disproportionately affects students of color. These facts suggest that we, as a community, need to do more to prevent the threat of gun violence.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Maxson, speaking about Be Smart.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Jamie Maxson. I'm a family medicine physician here in Cedar Rapids, and I live in the Crescent View condo, condos on the northeast side of town. In 2020, firearm-related injuries became the leading cause of death among children and adolescents ages one through 19 in the United States. Between 2019 and 2021, the number of gun deaths increased among children and adolescents in the United States by 50%. An important component of these gun-related deaths is death by suicide. Unfortunately, this has affected families in my practice, and the impact is immense and longstanding. In Iowa, 62 school-aged youth died by suicide using a firearm between 2015 and 2020. In Lynn County, eight youth died by suicide involving a firearm between 2013 and 2021. When youth attempt suicide with a firearm, they are more likely to complete the suicide as firearms provide a lethal means. In addition, suicidal ideation is increasing. 21% of eighth graders and 24% of 11th graders responding to the 2021 Iowa Youth Survey indicated experiencing thoughts of suicide in the previous 12 months. Gun violence among school-aged children is a safety concern for all of us. We can start addressing it by agreeing that everyone has a right to obtain and own a gun legally. We can also agree that it is an adult responsibility to ensure that all students feel emotionally and physically safe in the school settings in order for them to learn and thrive. In recent years, our schools have followed good practices on student safety by enhancing security features on their sites, outlining building safety plans and protocols, and providing support services to help students avoid dangerous choices and behaviors that can lead to violence. One study found in households that locked both firearms and ammunition, there was a 78% lower risk of self-inflicted injuries, and an 85% lower risk of unintentional firearm injuries among children and teens compared to those where guns and ammunition were readily available. The important takeaway here is that gun violence prevention is an adult responsibility we all must share.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angie Wayland, speaking about Be Smart.
Hi, my name's Angie Wayland, and I live at 1114 First Street Southwest. I had two children graduate from the Cedar Rapids Community School District in 2016 and 2018, and I have been a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for four years. I am a retired dental hygienist and a current property manager. The current reality is that gun violence among school-aged children, whether at home or at school, is a community-school issue. That is going, that is not going away unless we, as adults, do all we can to prevent it. This is where the Be Smart program comes in. Be Smart is neutral on the topic of gun ownership. It also does not advocate for changes to gun laws. Rather, it emphasizes the power of every adult to take agency over the safety of children and teens. Be Smart has been cited by the National PTO as an effective way to prevent school gun violence. For the past several years, we have given a well-received presentation of the Be Smart program to adult audiences in our community. Be Smart is a gun safety strategy for keeping children safe in five steps. First is S. S is for secure. Securing all guns in your home and vehicles. This does not mean keeping firearms hidden or out of reach, it means keeping guns locked and unloaded at all times. Remember, studies show most children know where firearms are stored. M is for model. Modeling responsible behavior around guns. This includes secure, not hidden, gun storage. A is for ask. Asking about the presence of unsecured guns in homes your children visit. R is for recognize. Recognizing the role of guns in suicide. And T is for tell. Telling others about the Be Smart message. Here in Cedar Rapids, we have been spreading this message to adults. We're here tonight because we'd like to help you join other districts to get this effective gun safety message out to every student, parent, and guardian in the Cedar Rapids Community School District.
Thank you, Angie. Our next speaker is Tricia Wechter, also speaking on Be Smart.
Hello, my name is Tricia Wechter, and I live at 7402 First Avenue Northwest in the Stony Point neighborhood in Cedar Rapids. I'm a mother of three children in the Cedar Rapids Community School District, one at Jefferson, one at Taft, and one at West Willow. I'm a nurse in the operating room, and I've been a mom's- I'm a nurse in the operating room, and I've been a Moms Demand Action volunteer since 2019. So we're here tonight to ask the Cedar Rapids Community School District to make it publicly known through a board resolution that the responsibility for gun safety is an adult responsibility and an expectation for all parents and guardians in our schools. While school staff members, law enforcement officers, and students all play a collective role in that responsibility, research shows the most important and effective responsibility for preventing gun violence lies with the adult guardians to keep all firearms locked and unloaded in the home and in cars. According to the U.S. Secret Service, addressing student access to guns is a critical component of any school-based threat assessment intervention plan. Informing and educating parents and guardians that storing guns locked, unloaded, and separate from ammunition can be an important way to keep schools safer from gun violence. The key is secure gun storage at home. Many school districts across the country have already implemented board resolutions like the one we suggest tonight, including districts in Michigan, Texas, California, Colorado, Pennsylvania, and now Iowa. Just last year, the Iowa City Community School District voted to implement the Be Smart resolution. These districts changed their handbooks and issued Secure Gun Storage Notification Letters to all parents and guardians, informing them of this expectation. It's also important to note that Iowa is one of several states that has a child access prevention, a CAP law, in effect enforcing legal liabilities on adults in cases involving the possession or use of an unsecured firearm in their possession by a minor. Many parents don't even know this. A board resolution informs parents and guardians of this legal obligation and the expectation that it is followed for school safety reasons. We have prepared packets for the board members with sample resolutions and models of the Secure Gun Storage Notification Letters for parents that have been used in other districts, as well as more information about the Be Smart program. We thank you so much for your time, and we welcome further conversation with board members about this important issue and our proposal.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Jo Elam, and she's speaking on the support of Harrison School students.
My name is Mary Jo Elam, and I live at 136 17th Street Southwest, Cedar Rapids. I'm a grandparent of a student at Harrison. And, you know, there are just a couple of comments I wanted to make. The first one was that I'm very disappointed in the lack of transparency on behalf of the board when they pushed through this whole resolution to knock down that beautiful building. The second thing is that I would hope that at some point you may consider just tearing down the old addition that is not really aesthetically pleasing, and perhaps building a three-story addition to the existing Harrison building. I don't know if that was ever considered. That could be an option four, because we had an option one and an option two to consider, and then option three was popped on us, and all of a sudden we're losing that school. And I just don't think that's really very nice. Anyway, we live in Cedar Rapids. We moved here 23 years ago to raise our children. We were attracted by the quality of the schools here. We're from the East Coast. The quality of the schools and the beauty of our city. And I think we need to consider that if we're going to be attracting more people to our town. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ashley Van Orne, speaking on Harrison Madison and the Facility Master Plan.
All right. Ashley Van Orne, 2464 Second Street Southwest. So I appreciate that we started off this meeting by celebrating volunteers, because I want to talk about some of the work that some very dedicated unpaid volunteers have been doing for several years now. Not only was I one of those dedicated volunteers for the last Facility Master Plan and the secondary, the conversation regarding Harrison Madison, but I'm also a product of the school system. I've stayed here, and I'm also so proud of the education that I had, including one of the teachers who we just celebrated for 30 years of service, that I have actually been funding a scholarship since 2018 to pay it forward to other students. But I'm incredibly disappointed in the outcome of Harrison Madison. We were not as volunteers involved in the final decision. I had to find out about it later. Unfortunately, the meetings aren't even broadcast live, so I have to go back and find some time to go and try and read the meeting minutes that are pretty hard to access and find out data to. In addition, the lack of the knowledge of the historic preservation in the city of Cedar Rapids is pretty disappointing from the people who are running any of these meetings. It's actually quite laughable that one time we were at Jefferson High School, and one of the organizers actually said, "Yeah, why are we calling these historic buildings? They're just old buildings. They're just falling apart." Matter of fact, if you check the text thread right now between some of the organizers of this, you'll realize that they're actually monitoring the scuttlebutt of the Harrison switcheroo and said in communication to one another, "Thank goodness the speakers only get three minutes." The RFP process for historical preservation of the new building actually included specifically monitoring historic preservation with new buildings. That's important because that was something that was historically left out of any of the other conversations. This Facility Master Plan lacks communication with the city and unwillingness to meet with us, too. I have on dozens of occasions not only personally come to be a representative to the city, but I am not the city. I'm here as a council member. I'm here as a committed individual to this entire process, but at no point in time did anybody actually take me up on those opportunities for the city to meet with, you know, any of these planners. We do also have an MOU with the city. I started that in 2018 after the last really terrible elementary facility master plan that was quite disastrous and got a lot of uproar in the community. I will say, though, that it's been utilized for less than five times since 2018. So, in essence, I urge you to stop participating in a fast-fashion society that only results in waste. Your newest buildings lack a lot of historical character, and you can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rita McCord, speaking on safety and support for Moms Demand Action.
Rita McCord, 5040 Willow Bend Road, Northeast Cedar Rapids, Iowa. Good evening. As a mother of two kids, a senior, and an incoming freshman at Kennedy High School, the issue of children dying by firearms weighs heavily on my mind. It weighs heavily on all of our minds because we are a community who cares to try to do the right thing for our kids. We agree that something more needs to be done in order to prevent, but we don't always agree on what that something should look like. People will say it's common sense and disagree on what that means. As a great retired show choir teacher from Kennedy, I think Mr. Benford would tell us, "Sense isn't common." We can break this phrase down and look at both what is common and what is sense. Working backwards, we have the sense that something is drastically wrong, as firearms have risen to the number-one cause of death in children in America. We have the sense that we want to protect our community and keep it safe from the incidents we hear about. We try turning on SportsCenter instead of the news, as a father did this weekend in the breakfast room at a hotel where hundreds of teenage girls were staying for a volleyball tournament. When an elderly couple wanted to watch CBS, the father deferred, in an effort to respect seniority and be a good role model to his kids. News of the latest Texas mass shooting outside of a shopping mall came on. We were less than two miles from our own shopping mall. We were the picture of shared commonalities. We stayed quiet. We held our breath and prayed. Maybe if we don't talk about it, it won't apply to us. This is the reality of the senses we have in common. We also have the commonalities of wanting to keep our kids safe. We have in common that we believe in responsible gun ownership. We have in common that we need mental health supports. With these commonalities, we can start to formulate policies that will be commonly agreed upon, such as reminding people of gun safety and gun storage safety and the Be Smart Plan. We can start to talk about what to do if we, as loved ones, notice our loved ones in crisis and want to prevent them from firearm safety for their own good through red flag laws, which also provide an extra tool to our law enforcement officers. When we turn away from fake leaders and look around at ourselves, we can find the sense we need. Please consider adding gun safety education as a priority for our kids and be smart.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maura Pilcher, and she'll be speaking about Harrison Madison.
Hello. My name is Maura Pilcher from 523 Noelwood Drive Southeast. In the interest of time, I'm just going to run through a bunch of points without any kind of smooth transitions. At the last meeting, you voted on an update item. This goes against Iowa Administrative Code that requires public notice. Listing something as an update is inadequate notice for an actionable item on your agenda. And I even sat down, looked at it, and thought, "Oh, I guess we're not voting on it tonight," but you did, and that's against code. Next, another thing that I want to clarify is that the Harrison Madison focus group was not represented by Mr. Galbraith because he did not attend any of our meetings after Dr. Bush's passing. The focus group was moderated by Mr. Gates, and he said right out in front of you, he says, "Yes, I attended those meetings." He did not. And that was fine, because we understood that the school district was going through a lot at the time. I also found it interesting that the architectural firm was not present at the last board meeting when you were making this decision. And I believe it would be in the board's best interest to hear directly from the professionals that you have hired when making multimillion-dollar decisions. For example, one thing I'd like to clarify that wasn't, I don't think, made clear at the open houses or maybe even to you all is that we did discuss equity in our process. We understood the perception that new is better and that every student deserves a state-of-the-art classroom. We discussed that at length. And Cedar Rapids, the problem was is that Cedar Rapids is used to Band-Aids. "Oh, we're going to fix up that school. We'll make it look nice." We were not talking about Band-Aiding these buildings. When we were talking about putting together, when we talked about it with the architectural firm, we said, "Okay, when we talk about the renovation plus addition, what does that really look like?" And while programming is not set yet, over half of the square footage of the Harrison renovation addition project would be new. I asked the architects, "Does that mean most of the students would be in new classrooms?" Most likely, yes. Most, if not all, of the students would be in new, state-of-the-art classrooms. That makes a big difference when people are discussing whether or not every child deserves a new space, new state-of-the-art, when they're used to going into old buildings in Cedar Rapids and saying, "Oh, no, it's been fixed up." That information and these plans, I don't think these were even ever, all the charrettes and things I've ever gone to when you're voting, you have pictures. People have different ways of learning. You need to see what you're talking about, what you're voting about. My understanding is those weren't shared in a very open way before these people were surveyed. And as Board Member Merschbach pointed out, they don't even vote on all three options that you then turned around and created, and that is also not transparent and incredibly frustrating. One last thing I wanted to bring up was that the cost delta is always being talked about as being $1.5 million between the two different plans. And actually, after the salvage of the historic elements are complete, as proposed, the difference would be $700,000. And as you can look at all of our other projects, $700,000 in $30 million projects is not that much. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Meyer, speaking on the Harrison School.
Hi. Excuse me. Hi, my name is David Meyer, and I live at 323 Crescent Street Southeast. I'd like to start off by thanking you for giving us the opportunity to talk today and also to thank you for your service. I think, you know, we honored that at the kickoff, but I admire you for the volunteer work that you do to make our community and our school districts better. I have to admit, I'm skeptical of these forums. I think it's just, decisions have been made, and it's just a little smoke and mirrors to give people's perspective that won't have any influence. But I was motivated by recent events in Cedar Falls where a mayor had made a decision, and after public discussion, he changed his mind. So I decided to come today and, you know, share my perspective and why I hope you reconsider your decision to demolish Harrison School. I hadn't been too involved in the process up until Save CR Heritage had shared some information that I finally paid attention to, but I rode my bike from the southeast side to the building over the weekend, and the building is so beautiful and so historic. And being a relatively new resident of Cedar Rapids for about five years, the history and the architecture of Cedar Rapids is so important. And I think other folks have made comments today where there's ways to make Harrison a state-of-the-art facility for students while keeping the structure. And I'm a finance guy, accounting background, finance, and there's talk about $700,000 and a million and a half. And, you know, the lowest-cost option isn't always the best option. And I know budgets are tight, but I really think this is a disservice, not only to the students but the community, that has lost so much in the past years between floods and derecho that this beautiful castle and sense of pride for, not only the community, but people like me who have the opportunity to appreciate it. So I do hope that you reconsider your decision to demolish that building. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker is Sylvia Popelka, speaking about Harrison.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Popelka, and I live at 2117 20th Street Northwest, Cedar Rapids, Iowa. I am a proud product of the Cedar Rapids Community Schools, graduating from Washington before there was a Kennedy, so that gives you a little frame of reference. But my husband and his sister did attend Harrison School as children, and in 1973, I returned to Cedar Rapids to teach at Harrison Elementary. And I had many wonderful years there. And then I taught for 30 years in the Cedar Rapids School District. After that, I went on to teach in some other places, the university. And then I came back, and a couple of years ago, I started doing Kids on Course at Harrison. I was blown away with how beautiful the building still was, and even better. Two weeks ago, I took all my first-grade books since my grandchildren, who do attend a state-of-the-art school in Iowa City, there at Christine Grant Elementary, have passed wanting to look at my first-grade books. So I took boxes and boxes to Harrison. And again, they have two of those little public or little free libraries there. I was stunned at how gorgeous the building still is, and it's very hard for me to understand why it has to be torn down. I know that things can be done to make it more future-ready, which seems to be the new term. I've been retired for nearly 20 years, so I'm learning the new educational buzzwords. But I see that as a great asset, not only to the northwest side but to our entire city. The architecture, the stability of that building, the windows, the wood, all of those things have a sense of history importance and, as I said, stability. There is more than just understanding technology, but there is almost like a muscle memory that comes from being in a beautiful, beautiful environment to learn. And I think that that is very important for the children who are going to attend there, not to mention the two fabulous, the two fabulous native bir oaks that withstood the derecho, which, if you tear down Harrison, those would be sacrificed, I'm sure. So I do think you need to go back and look at what are some other possibilities for saving a historically significant building in...
Excuse me, Sylvia. Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joni McMahon, speaking about Harrison.
Hello. Joni McMahon, 606 Fifth Avenue Southeast, Save CR Heritage. Dear Board of Education, Save CR Heritage often hears from people lamenting the loss of Union Station in downtown Cedar Rapids. Imagine what could have been had that iconic building not been demolished to make way for what was then considered progress. Once a building of that stature is gone, it can never be replaced. The current Harrison Elementary was built after the previous school was destroyed by fire. fire. The grand structure was constructed to signal that northwest Cedar Rapids deserved an awe-aspiring symbol of resilience crafted with materials designed to last for generations. This time, there is no fire. The future of Harrison Elementary is in your hands. If updated, the building could easily last another 100 years, if not longer, compared to the much shorter lifespan of modern construction materials. Basing the decision on fiscal responsibility alone, updating Harrison could save taxpayer dollars in the long run, as a new building will need to be replaced before an updated Harrison would. Suddenly, providing cost estimates at the last school board meeting for the demolition of Harrison and a new building on its site, figures never presented to the task force or at public input sessions nor in the survey. They come across as deceptive and underhanded at a time when public trust is needed for the upcoming school board referendum. We believe our students deserve the best and have faith that the architectural firm hired by the district would achieve that with their plans to upgrade Harrison. Your own website quotes the district's Matt Dunbar, who stated, "There have been factors over the years, such as enrollment shifts and economic recessions, that have played a role in CRCSD repurposing or selling buildings, but very few school buildings have been torn down. The schools have been repurposed for good within the community. If you still believe there is no alternative to a new school, please let Harrison go to an entity that will take proper care of the building and appreciate it for its value to the northwest community. While there will never be another Union Station, we can learn from the past and prevent similar losses in the future, starting with Harrison Elementary. Thank you for reconsidering your decision on this important issue." Thank you.
Thank you, Joni. Our last speaker is Greg Hopple, speaking about Harrison.
Greg Hopple, 613 Bartlett Court, Northwest Cedar Rapids, Iowa. I ask you to change your decision and support the subcommittee decision. A couple of questions. What was the statistical size of your private survey? How do we, as citizens, taxpayers, and parents, know that you did your due diligence with this survey that was summarily accepted over the other decision? Getting here tonight, I had to drive past the new and improved Jackson School. To me, it now looks more like a prison than a school. Earlier speakers mentioned desired aesthetics and equitability, and I agree. Is it more equitable to renovate Harrison for the kids or to send them to a prison structure? You betrayed those who volunteered. You betrayed the rest of us by destroying what trust we had left in you. Please change our minds and your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of public comment.
Or do we thank everyone that came out to speak tonight? Moving on to our consent agenda, please note that item BA-23355 was polled for additional review. Are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or a separate vote?
President Tyminski, I have a question about BA-23353.1-6, the agreement with Vista.
With Vista, Iowa? Just a question?
Yeah, just a question. Um, oh, I'm sorry. No.
Any other things from the board to be pulled? So, I think we can address that question first?
Thank you. So, that just, it looks like it was just a transfer of ownership of software. I'm assuming everything is just going to be a continuous flow. There's no interruption in service or reconfiguring of data or...
Can anybody speak to that? Because I don't see Carla.
It's okay.
Oh, I think Carla is on the phone. Hold on a second.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, it's just so that we have access to our previous data prior to switching to infinite vision. So, it's all of our data that's in Vista, all of our historical data. So, we have access to all that.
Excellent. That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm. Thank you so much.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Carla. Do we have a motion to approve the revised consent agenda due to the removal of item Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote due to the personnel report, base wages for employee groups, and the issuance of contracts.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Merschbrot?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Humble?
Aye.
Director Borchening?
Aye.
President Tyminski?
Aye.
Vice President Garlock?
Aye.
Moving on to administration, the board is asked to consider and approve the fiscal year '23 budget amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Same sign. Next up is the annual School Improvement Advisory Committee Report. Deputy Superintendent Quaker is here to provide the update.
Good evening, Board of Directors. I'm excited tonight to be able to present and have some of the team from our School Improvement Advisory Committee come and talk tonight and give an overview of some of the work that we've done this year and some of the goals for the upcoming year. And we've been focused on sense of belonging and looking at data. And I do want to recognize if they're on the School Improvement Advisory Committee, if you can please stand so we can acknowledge those members of the committee. Thank you for your service. And at this time, I would like Heather Zwanziger, who's a teacher at Kennedy, and Bridget Williams-Robinson, who also is an employee at Kennedy and a parent, and Braylon Henry, a 10th grader at Kennedy, to come up, and they're going to share some information with us. This will be a clicker. I'm going to see what he's doing. Okay. We have a PowerPoint, so we're waiting for that to come up. And it's a treat to have a student with us. That's extra special on our SIAC committee. So, do I click it? It will be up shortly. I'm used to this. So, I guess I've served on SIAC for two years and the School Improvement Advisory Committee, and it's a nice way to meet people and get a lot of viewpoints. You're looking at three representatives of views that come together that really work on the collective goal of creating a sense of belonging. Our data is showing that that is lacking amongst staff, that's lacking in our student populations, and so we are really dedicated and volunteering to kind of get to the bottom of that. I think I'll just speak a little before it comes up, but I've been teaching at Kennedy for 23 years, so sometimes I think, "Oh, I don't know if I can really give a good, well-rounded view," because few people stay at one school their entire career, and sometimes I wonder if, you know, I have the diverse, you know, scope for that. But I think that that's what I like about SIAC, is people from the community and people from different grade levels come in and share in different, you know, parts of the school process. And lately, I mean, I'm not, we do talk real stuff at SIAC, and people are leaving the district, and you're going to talk about retention and students feeling included. And I think, as I was thinking about, how do I prepare and what do I say to the board about what is our goal? And I would really like us to think about, the question I get sometimes in the community is, you know, "Why are people leaving?" Or, you know, and I want to talk about, our goal is going to be like, what makes people stay? And I think you need to think about that, like, what, why do you want to stay? And I love that question. And oftentimes, and I don't want it to be like, "Why are you staying?" Right? It's, we want it to be like, "Hey, tell me about it. Why do you stay?" Not, "Gosh, so many people are leaving." So, it's up. There's a little bit about SIAC in the formal sense. It is a relationship between the school and the community members. So, we will be back again to present to you on future work that we do. Having a strong SIAC promotes the community's sense of ownership in the school system and gives valuable direction to the school district. And my co-partners here can speak to that, too, but I find it very valuable to go into a meeting as a teacher. So, if anybody wants to be part of SIAC at the end, there's that information. It's really valuable to hear the different perspectives on educational priorities. Its primary purpose of what we do is to determine major educational needs and to make recommendations. So, that's why we're here to you, to the school board, on prioritized student learning goals. So, we want that for our students, and we kind of dive in and figure out what are their needs. Do you want to do this one? You just keep, how about you be my clicker? What we agree to do for SIAC is have an open mind. We do encourage involvement, so we like people to speak freely, impact and follow through. We believe in accountability, and we're working on that, and use a process or structure to help make improvements or change. We are dedicated to actually, you know, being honest and finding some data and bringing some ideas to you about what would make our student situ, or not situation, but our student experience and inclusion better, as well as our staff. Surface ideas from SIAC committee members to enact positive outcomes, so that's our goal. Sometimes we think a policy, right? You think it's going to be beneficial, and then we put it into practice, and it doesn't go the way that we thought. So, we are a work in progress. A second layer of ears, eyes, and voices and different perspectives. It's my favorite part of the evening when we get in our small group and we share out, and then here comes that student perspective, here comes that parent perspective, here comes that teacher perspective, and it really fosters a good discussion, the what-ifs. Sense of belonging, how can we improve our sense of belonging for all staff and students within the district? And, here. That's it. Oh, I'm reading. I could be reading from here. Here we go. Collective voice across stakeholder groups. Like I said, I talked about that, I think, before we had them. And then, continuous improvement process. Again, we want to give us some really great answers. We want to have those policies where people can right away answer, "Why do you stay? What do you like about working here?" And, you know, we need to ask ourselves why people are leaving. And the last one is information, I think the next slide is the information of if you, if, oh, no. Okay. Bridget? Me? Okay, so the center part, the outcome, is that you belong. And this is kind of the, I'm looking at the other SIAC people, this is kind of what we thought about, or all of the components that give you that sense of belonging. So, if you just take a moment to look at the web there, because, you know, there's a lot of teachers there, so we like webs. And so, things that, accountability and consequences, that's where a school board comes in. Think about the policies we're putting into play. Think about, do we have too many? Do we have some that, you know, we could get rid of? Do we have some that, the core, that we could really grasp on that makes people find that commonality? And I like, check your bias and your stereotypes at the door, and then how do we foster that? Collaborative conversations around, and you can read those, because I've talked about those. We do brainstorm. I will tell you that we're ready for action, though, because we've done a lot of brainstorming. So, we are, next year at this time, put it on your agenda, we're going to have some action plans, and we're going to have some ideas, and we'll have probably return. Braylon will be back. He'll be almost a senior, but we'll probably bring some of his friends, hopefully. Is that it? Okay. I thought it was, "Any questions?" Is the last page. Closing items, it's open. I'm on recruiting. I've got a friend here, so I'm going to recruit people. And it's just a really good thing, whether in the profession or you just care about the community, which I've heard tonight, investing in people feeling included and wanting to stay is a good investment. And now, we got it. Questions for anybody?
Heard of my fellow board members first. Director Newman?
Thank you for your presentation tonight, and thank you all for being here. There's an epidemic of loneliness and a lack of connectedness going on on a nationwide basis, and I think we're just starting to realize some of those, the effects, not only of the pandemic, but just the world we live in, right? So, are you incorporating some of the newer findings and newer research into the work that you're doing?
We've really been looking at our internal data and where we're at as our system. So, school improvement plans, what are the goals? Where are buildings, how are they doing on sense of belonging data from Panorama Survey? But I think that's a really good point, because it is an epidemic across the nation, and what are other places doing to make sure they're instilling that sense of belonging in students and staff and even the community as a whole?
Director Borchening?
And maybe you covered this. I'm sorry if you did. How long is a person usually, when they're on the SIAC committee? How long is a committee term?
I think it's, it's voluntary, so it's as long as you want to be a voice on that space.
Awesome. I appreciate that. Thank you for all of your awesome work. My other question is about, so you, the SIAC committee kind of decides what is going to be identified as a goal item. Do you guys look at, like, district improvement plans when you're, do you take that into consideration when you're making those, taking those ideas? That's awesome. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay.
Director Garlock?
Hello. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for serving on this committee. I have just sort of a, maybe a weird question, but like, as you've served on this committee, what's the most surprising or interesting thing that you have found out about this Cedar Rapids School District and the sense of belonging?
He's really not that sharp. I was going to say, this is my child. He has some good insight, so yeah. Really good insight.
Since I've been going to the SIAC meetings, one thing I've found surprising is like, the fact that like, the amount of people that like, don't feel included or like, like, safe in like, their school environment, like, whether it be teachers or like, like, staff members or like, students.
Thank you. That, yeah. Interesting. How about the adults? Anything stand out? Anything that was surprising to you?
I guess I would say, because I'm a classroom teacher, so I'm kind of unique, so I've emailed SIAC people to say, "Hey, I just polled my students on this." I think what's really interesting is that you talk about loneliness, and you were talking about kind of the isolation and how students are feeling and kind of the data. I was really surprised at how honest students are with their answer. And if they are asked a question, they are honest. And so, when I was curious about attendance and what makes a student attend a class, what makes a student not attend a class, and then I just kind of, you know, polled them, they're completely honest. And you can get a lot of, they're kind of an underutilized resource. And so, I think elevating that voice is really something that we need to tap into next time and with the research. But, you know, Braylon has brought that to the attention, and he vocalizes, but students in the classroom will also, you know, give that honest, they'll tell you. And so, I think that has really surprised me, because I thought they would tell me what I wanted to know or wanted to hear, and they are, "This is when I don't attend class," or "This is, makes me feel," what I think is a policy that would be making them feel included across the board. So, I could share some of that, because it's, you know, it doesn't have any names attached. What, sometimes some of my practices, I thought were, they must be too old-school, because it was actually not resonating with them. And so, I think it's kind of changed how we do things in the classroom, if you really hear them, and this new generation, or what kind of makes them feel included and what makes them feel, not just awkward, I guess, but not.
Yeah. Well, do you think, will there be something in your action plan to help student voices be amplified? Will that...
Wow, thank you for asking. I am hosting, my students are hosting a Kennedy High School, and I sent this to Chief of Staff, Dr. Gruff's Chief of Staff, an invitation where I have my students doing elevated voices on issues that young people have. And so, if I'm going to test it out and do it like it's a conference or a convention, and then if that goes... and then if that goes and collects data, then I think we'll start, that's something that we can use in the future, too. So you're welcome, you'll get invited.
Thank you.
Director Roundtree, did you have some?
Is that the correct pronunciation? Thank you for your student representation on the PSYAC committee. You totally rock for that. And hopefully you can encourage other students to get involved so that we can hear what matters to you with this, okay? Can we give him a hand up? Thank you.
Can somebody speak to the current size of the PSYAC committee and then also the distribution? Like how many students, how many teachers, how many people from the community?
So currently, there's over 70 members on PSYAC, but we have a regular group of close to 20 that attend. Small number of students, thank you Braylon. We also, and we had two this last time, about the same number, I would say, community partners, parents, teachers, and some people where, you know, multiple hats. But we have a core group of about 20 that show up consistently every time. We did, last year we met every month. This year we changed it to bimonthly. And the committee has decided that monthly meeting, that consistency of that and those action steps and that keeping us on track for that momentum would be definitely appreciated. So next, our next year would go back to monthly meetings. And again, anybody who's invited in can be on it. If you have a voice, you're welcome, and everybody has a voice. So we really do want to increase that student participation, because it's great. If we could have students in all of those small groups, it's really powerful. So thank you to Braylon. And there's, like I said, a few others that have shown up and we really appreciate it. We also have childcare during that time. And Joe Benedict from Kennedy has students that volunteer and take care of the, the younger ones during that time that, you know, aren't going to give probably their feedback on school. Some of them aren't even in school yet. And then we also provide, you know, supper, so we try to remove those barriers to make sure people can come. And it's really a, a tight group of people that work really well together. And again, that sense of belonging and hearing those diverse perspectives has been really beneficial and powerful. It, it's a great group, I'm so glad I'm a part of it. And I appreciate, you know, the members that talked and the members here tonight and everybody that has participated. And again, everyone's welcome.
How, just out of curiosity, how long are the meetings?
Hour and a half.
Okay.
Five thirty to seven. And I'll just close with, one of the things that I think is critical for next year to build that team up is that we do do some action and we do see some actual, like, feeling like our time is well spent and that it's going to be heard and that the voices that contribute to it. So, and that's what people tell me, is they're like, well, are we just going to talk about the problems? Are we going to tackle them? So that's the thing that we're really working on next year is action. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think I'm the only member of the current board that's served on the PSYAC committee in the past, but I really just enjoyed the time and just the engagement. And, you know, it certainly felt like there was a good diversity of like students that were sitting at the table, folks from the community, teachers coming from different perspectives. And if I remember right, things like profile graduate come out of groups like that. So appreciate the work of everybody on that committee and, you know, looking forward to getting future updates. Thank you for the presentation.
This board is going to take a short recess. We have two work sessions. The first one is on teacher recruitment and retention. And then the second one will be on magnet programming specific to City View. So we'll take a five-minute recess. I think, Justin, if that's enough time for you? Yep, five-minute recess.
This board is officially back in session. The first work session item tonight, Dr. Grover, who will provide an overview of the plan and invite participation and discussion from the board.
Okay, thank you all so much for the opportunity to have the discussion tonight around recruitment and retention. As I have been going out doing my listening tours and just talking with the team and really understanding some of the stressors that we're seeing within the school district. Certainly, when we have vacancies in our school district, it puts a strain on many parts of the organization. What does that look like? Sometimes parents are having to cover classes, so that means that they can't do their job. Sometimes principals are also trying to cover classes, teachers are taking on extra students, et cetera. And so on April the 26th, with our cabinet team and HRD members, we wanted to take stock of what is the current state of staffing within our school district, meaning how many vacancies we had open, and think about our steps forward. So that's what we want to talk about here tonight, kind of elevating this as a high priority for the school district. So you have a handout there, you can kind of follow along with me. So today, we're going to talk about our more imperative so that we can address the immediate and long-term concerns with our recruitment and retention and commit to a unified pursuit of achieving a common goal. I do want to say that as we have these conversations, this is a first step. It definitely does not cover all the concerns we have around recruitment and retention, but we want to take advantage of the time we have left on the clock thus far. So we took a look at what are some of the current strategies underway in the school district. That includes quite a bit of posting on Teach Iowa and other job boards such as Handshake that allows us to be able to connect with individual educators all across the country. We do tend to attend some college fairs. I believe that most of them have been in-state this year, not much out-of-state. We have been offering letters of intent for first semester student teachers, probably as soon as practical for the organization. We do believe that there is a sense of urgency to take some additional steps. I want to give you some insight into the data. I would invite Craig to come up now because this data is live. Thank you to the team. I do want to say this going back to April 26th, as you all know, that was just a couple of weeks ago, and we've had the folks in the room here, folks behind the scenes, everyone working to try to get this figured out along with our staff members. I can't wait to share about their involvement.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. So what we've got represented here is a tableau vis- oh, is a tableau visualization of our vacancy data, and this is really exciting stuff. This is brand new. And as Dr. Grover alluded to earlier, this is our first iteration and first step at this. So just to kind of walk you through what's on the dashboard here is we've got a listing of, and starting in the upper-left corner, we've got a listing of the number of current openings and the number of FTE. So it gives us some sense of how many bodies we've got to fill and how much FTE we're looking to fill. Next over, we've got, if you follow immediately to the right of that, we've got the number of attendance centers or campuses that have vacancies, and right now it's at 29, 29, so quite a few of them. Now, the next number in line is a little deceptive because we want to be clear about this. We started this, as Dr. Grover said, on April 26th. Since then, this is when we started, we filled 16 positions. Thank you, Justin. We've still, we've filled 16 positions since then. There's actually been more that have been filled prior to that, but since we started keeping track in this regard, that's where we decided to draw the line. Which comes out to be, if you total it up from that date forward with the number we filled and the number we still have open, we're about 20% of the way home to getting that every classroom having a highly qualified teacher into it. Right now, the other thing that I think is really important to highlight is the furthest value, all the way on the right, indicates the overall sort of vacancy rate in Cedar Rapids right now, which is just about 5.5%. So reasonably low number. And then we break it down a bit more just so you can see. These, this will be data that we can give you access to if you want to see it as well. But you can see that most of our openings are at the middle, are at the elementary level, and a very even split at the high school and middle school with just a handful at places like Polk and Bertram, which is what the next couple of bar graphs indicate. And there's one that says TBD, which are things like nurses or ELL teachers who we're going to place later. Again, we've got a little thermometer bar telling us how we're meeting, how we're going towards our goal. You know, our goal is to get that 100% by early, early August. And then we've got a listing by attendance centers, and I know this is rather hard to read at this distance, but when you have it on a screen in front of you, it's a little more clear. And you can see very clearly, broken out from, from most to least in terms of which attendance centers have them. And then finally, at the bottom, there's a line graph here. And what this sort of indicates is when we are getting the postings up and when we're filling them. So the blue line is when we're posting and the green line is when we're filling. And what we're really hoping to see here is that we can start historically moving some of that data back. So we're, we hope that we can post a little earlier and fill a little, a little earlier as well. Again, this data gets updated as we update our HR data as it comes through. It's my understanding that there's about 10 more offers in the, in the, in the making here. So the data's going to look even better probably in the next day or two. But we're monitoring this in real time. And again, a huge shout out to our HR team and particularly Angela Billman, our just incredible data analyst who just does amazing work with us and turned it on a dime. So I'd be happy to take any questions you have about this.
I have a question. It's Adam, Adam.
Sure.
Not really a question. I guess it's just really a comment. I'm wondering, so if we're looking at open positions by type, and then, so we're looking at gened and then sped and then teacher leadership. So this is by type, not by percentage. So I'm wondering if that could be expressed in percentage because I know that we have less special ed teachers than we do general ed teachers. So I think that is significant to understand that, because even though it's more of a divided out group, that that vacancy is actually really high and that's a critical field need area.
Yep, we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
On the date posted, date filled, is that, is there a typical time of year when most teachers are considering making a move? And is that why it's kind of compressed at the, toward the end of the year?
Yeah, I think, you know, from my lens, it would be purely speculative at this point. I think one of the things that's exciting about this is that we can actually gather data so we can make some more informed decisions. So anything I would tell you beyond this would be a little speculative in nature. But I think that there's, there's internal factors. We've got inter, we've got some internal barriers that we're working through, trying to get positions posted faster. And I do think it's also a function of, you know, of my 30 years in education that, yeah, teachers think about moving in, in spring. So.
Thank you.
Track is how quickly a position is filled?
Yeah, I think that's exactly what we're trying to get at is we're trying to, we're trying to move that whole process up, get it not only starting earlier, but moving quicker and compressing those two lines so that the distance between the, the post and the fill is tighter.
Yeah, I think that obviously that's important, but you know, making sure that we've got the right candidate too. So just.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't want to weigh too heavy on how quickly we fill a position.
Totally agree. It's the most important work we do, selection.
Another question in that top corner where it says 67 open positions, are there new open positions? I mean, how does that, that number grows, right?
Yes, the N is going to change. Yes. And that's why we had to say the start date was April whatever.
This many open positions since this date.
Yes, and then we're just going to keep tracking them going from that point forward. So it's not inconceivable that that number will flex up and down a little bit as we go on because we'll add positions, but they may be lateral moves. So we may open up some other stuff internally which may cause other additional openings. So there may be some of that that happens too.
Director Newman?
Me again. Do we have any benchmark data for other districts that gives us anything comparable to what we're tracking here rather than just open positions at the end of the year, beginning of the year?
It's a great question. Not that I'm aware of, but I think it's something we should look at.
Director Borchum?
Oh, go ahead, Director Humble, so I can wait.
When I look at the current strategies underway, and I know we have postings at Teach Iowa and other job boards, what are some of the other job boards that were?
Like Handshake, Indeed, you know, those were the two that were shared with me. Anybody else?
The ones that I remember.
Okay. LinkedIn, and mostly LinkedIn for administrator jobs.
Okay.
Okay, all right. If you have other questions, please just pop on, let us know. And so there's a lot of discussion, but I think the main thing here is we're starting to track some data so we can get started. And love the questions and we can make the adjustments that you pointed out. So as we kind of think about this more imperative that's in front of us, it's, it's real simple for us. It's why are we doing this? And that is, we believe that our staff deserve, our schools to be fully staffed and our students deserve a highly qualified teacher in every classroom. With that being said, here's our North Star going forward, that we want 100% of our vacancies to be filled with highly qualified teachers by August the 17th. I'm like, when is the first day of school? So it's like a week. So new teacher orientation is on August the 17th, and we like to see those positions filled at that particular juncture. So we kind of put together some strategies from a leadership perspective with an initial opportunity to share some thoughts with our staff. So last week, I did a district-wide Zoom call where all staff members could log on to the webinar. And thank you to the communications team for facilitating that. And so basically, we provided feedback at that particular time to more than 3,000 employees. So there was a 78% open rate of the information that we sent out. It included a video and just a survey. So we're trying to figure out how to get people input, but also kind of respect their time. So some people watched the video, some people didn't, some people just answered the questions. So 48% of the people, they clicked on the link and we had 514 views on that. We had a grand total of 882 people that engaged in this process. I think that tells us a lot about this is an important topic to our staff. So those that participated, I'm going to kind of walk through some of the questions that we shared with them. So you can see here, the first question we wanted to know from staff members, and we kind of asked ourselves this too, is this important to staff? Will this make you feel more confident in doing your job better if we're able to get vacancies filled? 75% said yes. The other question that we wanted to raise to our staff members, it was around, should we have an incentive to recruit Black Indigenous people of color to the school district? This was interesting because our first proposal did not include having an incentive to recruit people of color when we went out. This, that came up during the feedback really from the administrative team. So I said, you know what, let me put the question out to staff. So overwhelmingly, 64% of the people said, yes, we need to invest in some type of incentive. So, so we actually made some changes to our initial strategies that we had. So we also wanted to know whether or not people would refer other people to our school district. That's important word of mouth. I work here, come along, you know, work with me. So you can see that 38% of people that they would be okay with sharing with someone about coming to Cedar Rapids Community School District. We did get some feedback there. Some people, they don't know a teacher, like, so depending on what part of the organization they work in, they may not know another teacher. But what was interesting, I think this kind of ties into what we shared here earlier about why do people stay? But people feel like there are areas that they want to continue to see us work on in our school district with some of our systems, the way that we continue to advance learning. And they would feel more comfortable when they're able to see, you know, some, some changes or some areas that they feel may need some attention. So that would be something we would probably want to go back and survey as we continue to do this work. The other interesting part, we're always hearing about benefits. What kind of benefits can you offer? How do we compete with other entities? And we asked a question about childcare. So with the childcare initiative that we talked about was students, families that have students that would be in our before and after-school program. So for us, we saw this as a win-win. Your kid is enrolled in our school district and you can have before and after-school care. And we would supplement so that the employee would only pay 50% of the cost, and that's to our Champions Program. Well, you can see that 12% of the people responded yes to that, and I'll give some more, a little bit explanation as we move forward. But some of the feedback that we received around this particular one is number one, I, I don't have to. What else do you have to offer me? The next one was more about, what about children that are between the ages of zero to three? Maybe they're not in school yet. So our, so our conclusion to some of the feedback that we received was more or less around, we need to diversify our benefits options. So give people a choice. Some people were saying, you know, I'm not at that stage in my life where I have children. I would rather have some type, something going towards housing. So can there be some type of housing? Can there be pet insurance? Can there be something for the younger children? So just different options. I do want to say too, that in developing these questions, I worked hand-in-hand with UREES from our teachers' union group, probably to help draft these particular questions. This is something that's important to them as well, and as part of negotiation, something that we want to study even further. But I do appreciate their collaboration and blessing us to give us the opportunity to try something now. Okay, so what did we kind of come up with the proposal that we want to move forward? So the first one is recruit, hire, and stay bonus of $1,500 for any of our current employee, employees. So the way we looked at that was more or less, we do want to try to figure out some kind of way to honor the people that are here. How do we make this a recruitment and a retention? So if you refer someone, then you will receive $1,500 over two years. We would make those payments out by the September of this upcoming school year. That's a 23, 24 school year, and then the second year if that person is still here. So again, we're trying to keep them and we're trying to keep the person that they refer.
Could I get some clearer, I'm sorry.
Sure.
So is that 1,500 per teacher who is in our system and has been in our system? And 1,500 for a referral? No, just 1,500 for the referral?
Just a referral and any staff member. Let me say that. Any staff member can refer. We have a process in HR, you know, to kind of get into some of those details. But any staff member can refer and they will receive $1,500 just for the referral.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I do, and I could talk about the budget here at the end. So a hiring bonus of special education, so to your point, Director Borchum, earlier, we recognize that the special education positions are very hard to fill. And we've tried some incentives before, thought about them. But basically, we're looking to provide $5,000 for a special education position over three years. And that means we would give the $2,500 the first year, $1,500 the second year, and $1,000 the third year. Again, trying to get some sustainability there as well. So we did decide to go ahead and move forward with the childcare. We thought this would be a good opportunity to kind of see how these added benefits, how that rolls into just even getting it through our benefits office. And when we looked at the number of people that said yes, it was actually 98 people that said yes. So that kind of doubles the number of participants that, that we currently have, but it also put us in that sweet spot of our budget. So we were right in the middle of knowing according to how many people would accept it where we want it to be. So we decided to still go ahead. For the ones that wanted it, maybe it wasn't a high number of people, but for the ones who did, we wanted to still offer for them. Okay, and so this is where we kind of switched. So we were going to offer 1,500, $1,000 to anyone that signed during our campaign. And so after we had conversations about recruiting more diverse teachers to our organization, we actually ended up redirecting those dollars. And so what we're looking at is a hiring bonus of $3,000 for our BIPOC teaching staff i- if the person stays for three years. So that allocate, that would be a total, we're looking to maybe if we can recruit, I want to say $3,000 based on 20 applicants. Is that where we are? Yes. $60,000, is that right? Am I right? Somebody tracking me? And then also, here's what we also heard about this though. When people of color come to our district, they don't stay. What does the support look like? So we are looking to allocate about $20,000 to try to see what would be ways that we can provide support for teachers that we hire of color. Whether we get somebody to mentor them, have activities, et cetera. We'll be looking to pull a plan together for that. But we went ahead and allocated the funding based on the feedback we received from our staff. Do want to give you just a little bit more context in regards to maybe why people are feeling that sense of urgency. Right now, for teachers of color, they own, and for Black teachers specifically, they only represent about 2.2% of our overall teaching staff in the district. And if I include other races, and you can see the thin lines there, that is about 3% overall of any teachers of color in our school district. Okay, and then just the last one that we are researching a little more, and that's to offer letters of intent to all qualified student teachers and possibly paying student teachers. There are avenues to do that, but it's a little bit complicated. And so we are just researching that a little bit more. But we do want to continue to hire the student teachers as quickly as possible. So our next steps, of course, we'll take any feedback from you tonight. Hopefully, we have your support. Additional questions you might want us to add, change some things, and we're happy to do that. But we are ready to launch this as soon as we get your blessing. And so our campaign theme, and thank you to our communications team. I really like this approach that they were able to take here. Be the one to come and teach with us and up to $5,000 bonus. I have shared all the breakdown of what that looks like with you, and you can kind, they shared some of the social media graphics here. And they kind of got this inspiration from going out, talking to teachers about, you know, why is it special to teach? What do we need from teachers in our school district? So be the one to create aha moments, be the one to ignite passion, be the one to create a sense of belonging. You heard that here tonight. So that would be the call of action as we go out and recruit. They're already working on a website banner. You can kind of see that here as we try to make things actionable in our school district. They also will have a website that will have all the, the Q and A type of information, more details that people would need to know to understand this campaign. So that concludes the overall nuts and bolts of it. This will be funded, for the most part, through ESAR dollars. So we have the opportunity to take advantage of the ESAR dollars here over the next two years. So Carly's not here, but she did give her stamp of approval along the way there. The only caveat is the last year, that third year for the special education bonus, that last $1,000 that would come out of special education funding. And this, oh, one last thing. This is for the 23, 24 school year. We will continue to evaluate along the way. Again, we're taking advantage of ESAR dollars. So we're not asking for a commitment beyond this next school year at this particular time.
Questions from the board?
I have a couple. One, I, first of all, this is tremendous work, and thanks, everyone. I'm sure it was a lot of information, a lot of collaboration to kind of get here. So really appreciate that. I think this is an item that has been clearly identified as a need, so appreciate it being addressed. My question is about childcare. I think that's a tremendous option, that 98 people are saying they're going to say yes to be added to that childcare option. I'm wondering if, I'm, I'm wondering if other options, as had previously been discussed, if there were help towards housing or a different need so that we can be equitable to our, our staff in providing that benefit.
I think we can take a look at it. We were up against the ending time for like benefits enrollment, et cetera. And we were more familiar with this program than maybe what we were with some of the other ideas. But yes, we're happy to continue to look at it, and if it's something that we can do, we can bring it back to the table.
And then my second question, you'd said this is 23, 24 school year through the ESAR dollars. So my concern there is just about sustainability. If this proves to be a valuable practice, I just would like to see some thoughts moving forward on how to sustain it financially.
First of all, thank you for putting together recruitment and retention campaign. That's something I believe we as board members have been waiting to happen. So, and I like that we're in at the beginning and getting an understanding of the process. That is helpful, that is helpful for our community to see where we are going. And we know there is a teacher shortage. So whatever we can do to, to recruit and retain our students, I liked the beginning of this plan, so I thank you guys for who was all involved.
Yeah, everyone, everyone.
I didn't know it.
I thought you were winding down, I'm sorry.
So, so it's nice to see a plan that has been, been put in place and to have continued updates to the board. That would be great. You want me to give it to you?
Thank you.
No, I just want to say thank you, and I'm especially glad that there's collaboration with the administration at CREA to work with the, the teachers to make sure that everyone has buy-in to this plan. I think, I think it's great, and I'm amazed at the amount of work that you've all put into it so quickly. And I love the data that you're keeping.
Other questions from the board?
Okay, all right, I'll make, looking for the next.
I was just going to echo that. Appreciate that this is a priority and that we're moving so quickly on it. Certainly hopeful that this. Certainly hopeful that this strategy works, and I'm sure that the team will come up with some additional strategies if we see that this isn't the only thing that we need to actually start to close that gap. So, thank you.
I don't know if they made some changes or something. We'll see.
Our final agenda item is focused on magnet programming, City View Community High School. I will turn the meeting over to Adam.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. We're grateful to be back at the table and in a dialogue this time. We do have just a couple slides, but we're going to get into the deep dive conversation and hopefully get some feedback. One, but two, and more importantly, Justin, do you have the clicker? Sorry. Feedback, one, but two, clarity. And so we want to give this as an opportunity to say, if there are any of these concepts as we get into our deep dive, do you say that doesn't make any sense? Or please explain more. This is an opportunity that we really want to grow and understand what your concerns and what your excitements are as well. So two agenda items for us. One is the deep dive, where we go into the school model, go all the way into the nuts and bolts, and hopefully you understand what our concepts are, but also what the day-to-day will look like for a student and a teacher. And then two, we're going to, at the end of this, bring this back to how this connects to our broader magnet vision as well. With that, I will hand this over to Trace and Dan, who are joining me tonight. We're going to start with the end in mind, and these three value adds are what we want all of us to walk out of here, or our first draft of where we hope the value adds will be, to say this is why we're doing City View, and these are the concepts we're pushing. So first, all City View students will earn a high school diploma and either college credit or professional certification. And that's really what we want people to say. If you want this value, come to City View. Two, we're going to do this, and this being they're going to master their graduate level standards and profile of graduate competencies through a personalized competency-based approach. This is progressive, and this is innovative work. And then finally, we're going to create an inclusive environment that values every student voice and makes sure they're heard in their school, they're helping co-create that environment. So with that, we'll talk about the how now. Well, I'll hand it over to Dan.
Thank you, Adam, and thanks for having me, like Adam said, as well. You have a couple handouts. Sorry for the dump of paper. I wanted to get us rooted first in the transcripts that we put together. So the most recent handout I have given you has a glossary, I believe page 10, as well as a couple transcripts. And as Adam mentioned, our goal tonight is to keep this engaging. You've already been here two hours, right? It's been a long meeting. There's just been a lot that's happened. So we were told we get an hour if we go short. I understand, but we want to keep you engaged, so we're having a conversation about what questions you have as they arise. So what I'd like to do is for this first group over here, David to Nancy, if you could focus on Chantel. So what I would like is if you would look at pages 13 through 15 in those sheets that you have right now in your hand, that is a transcript that Trace put together with a persona of a name, Chantel, of a potential student at City View. And what you'll see there is potential experiences in terms of pathways as well as discoveries. So if you could look at that over and think of what excites you about what you see on this page? The pages 10 and 11, that's a glossary to help you with any terms that you may see on there that are confusing. And then Dr. Grover to Director Newman, if you could do Brooks, I believe, from 16 to 18, we're just having you split it up for the sake of time.
I can't relate to see with that. Can y'all see it, or do you need them to read the classes down the side?
Yeah, they are kind of blurry, aren't they?
Yeah, I can't. But I think it's also in the book, and...
It is a little bit better in the book, but it's still a little blurry. So for those classes on the side are your basic core classes, so English, sociology of U.S. history, sociology of U.S. government, sociology of economics, and so on, is what it reads down the side of that picture, right underneath Chantel? Those are grades. Yep, those are the standards, so that's satisfaction of the standards. So exceeding proficient, so on. Yeah, no. Nope, it exceeds proficient, nearing proficient in developing. So before we have you share out with the parts that you're excited about, I wanted Trace to talk for a second about what we did here, what these are, what a persona is a little bit. I know we had some questions on this, whether or not these are real people and where these stories came up from.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. So personas are a tool that lots of people use when you're trying to create something new that people can't really necessarily have an experience themselves and seen. And so you use personas to do several things. One, to create a picture or a glimpse of what's possible and what could be, to humanize it by putting an actual human face and name to a potential character, and then be able to tell the story of what it is your desired state or your desired end is. And so what we did with these, actually, many of these were developed like a year and a half ago, and they're long-form stories. We can, you can read about the entire week and the life of these characters. The work was based off of the concept design team from a year and a half ago that kind of came up with this concept of City View. And so we took that information and began to create these personas. And so Chantel and Brooks are just two of those that you can see tonight to get a glimpse of what, you know, in four years, what a student might exit with and their story and so forth.
They're not our current students, just the clarity.
Yeah, they're not ours, yeah, these are, these are, what are the common, creative commons photos, they're actual human beings, they're just not our human beings.
As far as we know, based on AI, it's hard to say anymore.
It's hard to say.
But so if you have thoughts that you're excited about, we'd like to share those out, and Trace will get those down as we share.
So something that I'm excited about, so I know that the 21st century, 21st century skills were developed in conjunction with local employers, and that's that communication, being able to use a PC, et cetera, et cetera. So it looks like some of those same local employers that were involved in that 21st century skill development are also listed as resources or partners for SHADOWs internships and interviews, visits. So I do like to see that because I think it's a continuity of a local employer and us being able to work as a community school district to meet a community need there.
Others, positives, things that you're excited about from what you saw?
I think I kind of felt that there was a little bit of confusion with the charts, right? So I mean, if you've looked at a report card, you know, I mean, some of this stuff will look familiar, but you know, really, the powerful stuff here for me was at the bottom of that first page where it said personal statement, right? So I mean, that little box up top where it talks about purpose and plan certainly is really powerful, but really, that personal statement, I think, was far more powerful. So again, depending on who this is really designed for would determine what order you want to see this in, but certainly for us. And I don't know what, you know, the profile of a graduate, like the way that chart looks. I think once it's described to you, it's probably really powerful, but on first glimpse, it's probably difficult to decipher exactly what that's trying to tell you. I would say that as I looked through it, it was nice to see the projects, right? So I think, you know, and again, I'm looking at this, you know, as, you know, this is far more powerful, I think, to a future employer when you look at relevant experience, right? When I look at the projects that Chantel worked on, where she was, I think by the time we get to that third page, you can see her schedule, and you can see that she is at places like Co. She's doing an internship at Bradley and Riley. That becomes clear. So again, when I'm looking at this, I could see a student presenting this to a future employer instead of a resume, right? So I mean, I think that's really powerful. You know, so I mean, I'm excited about, I think, you know, the experience that Chantel's getting looks powerful, but again, I think I was distracted by the charts in the beginning, quite honestly, so I'd almost rather see them a little bit lower after we talk about what her, you know, what her passions and what her statement is all about. Other comments, positive, negative? I'll go to Cindy first, yep.
I'm looking at Chantel's senior schedule. And as President Tominski referenced, it shows her attending Co. and Kirkwood each of the days of the, the four days of the week. I mean, is that the type of schedule that we anticipate for our students by the time they're a senior, that they'll be leaving campus, so to speak, to go somewhere else?
The goal is by the senior year, they're out much more, whether through internships or classes elsewhere. But still connected to us. One of the things that I've discovered in education is sometimes that seniors leaving is really difficult, so you can articulate a real clear pathway, and then getting them to take those steps with us is important so that they can start to learn and still come back to us as a resource as they go through those steps.
Do we have some sort of agreement with Kirkwood and Co. about these students, or is this like post-secondary enrollment?
Yeah, the Kirkwood, the district post-secondary enrollment options would be what we'd go through. While exploring others.
Other feedback?
So I just, I'm excited to see, what we're writing, what we're excited about, I'm excited to see the inclusion of project-based learning. Just having had children that were in magnet schools, first at Johnson and then at Roosevelt, I know that project-based learning really encouraged a lot of investment and excitement about their work, so I'm really happy to see that moving forward. I do have a question about some of the online courses. Are those live online courses, or are those courses that would be prerecorded and then pursued at a student's own pace, or both?
Edgenuity would be the online courses. So for instance, with PE, right now, we don't have a PE teacher, but through the edgenuity online, and we have quite a few students in the district that take PE online, we could have them actually complete their workouts, record their workouts at the YMCA, which has agreed to be a partner with us, and get that validated through a PE teacher through the online edgenuity platform. Spanish is another option to do that for students that are interested in going that route. Other questions? Anybody from Brooks? His wasn't as exciting.
So one thing that comes to mind, so you just said, you know, Brooks isn't as exciting, you know? And you're looking for students across the gamut, and some will need more hand-holding, and some will be very self-directed and very capable of doing that. So how, what's that approach look like for Brooks?
Yeah.
If, say, he needed a little bit more guidance?
Absolutely. There is one typo here. It says on 16 that Brooks is a senior. He's actually a freshman, and that's illustrated on page 15. So a freshman experience isn't going to be as robust, right? There's still a lot of exploring. And I think as we get into going through the manual a little bit or the prospectus, we'll highlight some of that. But what we want for a student like Brooks is to have opportunities to visit the five key industries or main industries that have been highlighted by the Economic Alliance and see different opportunities. So what we hope for him is that he does site visits, that he does projects that touch on those different industries and learns career clusters within those industries that he could focus on. And then we'll also talk about our advisor piece that we expect to be a cornerstone of City View, where we get to know students and are having those regular conversations so that as Brooks starts to articulate a pathway, we can start to push him in that direction through our counseling office, as well as our teachers supporting that. Or if he's just lost, that we have somebody there to listen to him as needed.
Maybe just to comment, I mean, I think we should be as excited for both students, right? So looking at, this is only a freshman, so there's limited experience. Again, maybe that feedback on the reordering of this, because the schedule is impressive to me, like what the student is actually doing just in their freshman year. You know, talking about exploring trades, so how do we really pull that out? So again, if you're looking at a future community partner, like a volunteer mentor, you know, what opportunity do they see to assist this student with, you know, moving from unsure to a little bit more sure, right? So, you know, you say exploring the, you know, the categories or the industries in this community, I don't necessarily see that stand out here. So it would be nice to see that, you know, exploring trades and then go into that schedule and really seeing that stuff pull out, because I think the opportunity that this student has feels like it would get them there, but there's a lot of, you know, white space on the page, right? So again, I don't know what the final looks like, right? I mean, there's a printout, there's a persona, so I understand it's going to improve, but you know, even looking at that second page where it's just, you know, half the discoveries are empty, does that mean that the student isn't pressing, right? Are they supposed to have something in all of these boxes or not? So cleaning that up, I think, would be important.
Yeah, I think the thing to pay attention to is, as you said, Brooks is a freshman. He's not going to have as many projects as Chantel, who has a full, so that those spaces are kind of meant to show you how that's going to build out over their career.
Yeah. And again, I'm mapping this to a resume where it's like somebody with less experience is going to have a one-page resume, somebody with more experience can have a five-page, but you know, showing like a five-page with half the space empty is not what a resume would do, right? So, yep.
I want to keep us moving for the sake of time. Questions before we move on that haven't been, any other questions in your head? Okay, I want to start here because as we discussed, what would be the best way to go about this, we get much more excited about students than the goals and some of the other stuffs that are super important, but the student story and the student vision that we want to create, I think, is always in our heads, much as it is yours. So with that, we'll transition to vision, mission. So if you go to page three, and we're back to the booklet now, you can, yep, you can cast aside that packet. That was meant to reduce confusion. I'm not sure if we succeeded in that. So the vision, mission, every learner, future-ready is our vision, much like it is for Cedar Rapids. Our mission is to unleash the human potential existing within every learner through authentic community-embedded learning experiences that prepare all learners with a plan, passion, and pathway for future success. And I hope that you saw that a little bit through the transcript. That's what we were trying to highlight, is what that looks like. With that in mind, any goals that you have for City View, based on what you know about that transcript and what you know about the presentations we've already given, as well as our vision and mission? What goals do you have?
So I think there's, it's just important to be clear that that vision is reflective language that is reflecting on our entire district, because this, it's not separate from us, and it is part of our district. So I think just making sure that we're using language that really ties it all together, that City View is not separate, but is part of the Cedar Rapids Community School District, I think, would be important.
I'd like, I'd really like us to be able to track the success, not just of our students, but how it's but how it's impacting our community, whether it's projects that, projects that impact our community or that they become connected with employers and they stay in our community. Or where they're going to school, whatever. I just want to see the the outcome data across the board.
I would like to see larger capacity, larger language around diversity. This needs to be part of the main picture overview of what City View is all about. And this is missing in here.
I think there's clearly a place for equity and safety on here, I think. I mean, it's, you know, looking through it on on first first glance, it certainly feels like it covers a lot of ground. But I agree with Director Roundtree that, you know, seeing a specific equity goal and then, you know, really kind of talking about safety. My feeling is that the community might have some concerns with the idea that, you know, students are moving around and maybe they're not aware of how much students move around already, right? So that the thought that they're going to have this hub in downtown and then go to places like Kirkwood and Co. and and other places, you know, making sure that that is something that is that is clearly articulated here, I think, would be important.
I would like to see what's in here expanded on and tying into diversity and tying into what we just talked about with recruitment and retention of teachers, that not just those five main economic, you know, areas of the city, but any and all essential, I guess, jobs and employment. And so, you know, we need teachers, like how does City View set someone up from within the school district to get the education they need, take the next steps to become a paraprofessional, get on the path to be a teacher and contribute to that side, you know? So we're not sitting here with thing, we've got these five economic areas and we still don't have enough teachers at the end of the day.
Great point. Education technology is in one of those, so we were kind of counting education in general as one of those industries.
I would just, you know, I would just let, there's like a couple of things that are super important to me and trades are one of them. And I know as a district, one of our goals is college or career-ready. So I just want to make sure that that's really clear, that that a career in trades or a career outside of a college-bound career, that the skills and the networking and the opportunity that's being provided through City View for those options is also included and highlighted and pretty clearly defined.
Following up on that, just looking at the, I don't know if this is the board, what do we call this? The design team here, the community advisory board. I don't know if you've had any conversations with local trade union groups or if there's any representation on this community advisory board from union members specifically. That's important to me, obviously. Our teachers are union members as well. And so that would be something that I would say would kind of expand what Director Boardtreating was talking about.
Yeah, the union and specifically trade representation is low on that and that's something we need to adjust.
Do you get a sense how how big would you want that advisory group? I mean, is that something that you would expand or would there be other groups that you'd be expanding to get engagement?
Yeah, that's one of the things that's tricky is that that group is already getting quite big. You know, there's a reason that a school board's seven and not 50. However, we, it's, being represented is also very important. So I think, I mean, it gets to 20, gets a little big in my mind. But if it's one or two extra so that we have trades better represented in there, then that's what's going to happen.
Yeah, I hate to say it, but we could lose a CEO and get some union people on there real easy, it seems like.
I I agree with Director Merschrock. I think we need to have union representation there as well.
But if you haven't already to, like the advisory board, just making that understanding with them that trying to get representation, diversity in that group is the goal and that there's only so big that that group can be. So, you know, if somebody needed to roll off, that they're not thinking that they've got some, you know, long-term commitment, right? That there's, it's really the benefit of the of the group, right?
Yep.
Can we also have some staff on here too? I think we can readjust them from being on the actual board to some space.
I do have a question when I look at the achievement goals. And since we will close the achievement gap at a higher rate in the district's average as measured by MAPS and ISAP, how, how, how do you go about doing that? What, how are you going to change or close the gap?
The reason I think that we'll be able to do that better is because of giving students voice in what they're learning. So students all over the district are choosing not to read the things we want them to read, right? That's been happening since I was in high school, I know. Sorry, Director Garlock. However, the No, I know.
Come on, you love that textbook.
Right. Getting them to read something that's interesting to them is much more likely to happen, right? So developing their curriculum around things that they see a future in, they see a purpose in, and they see goals is the ultimate goal. And they'll be more likely to engage with the content that's going to help them grow. So that contextualization of the learning helps for students to really get engaged. And then also it helps them remember it because there's something that they're tying to it that's a little bit more of interest rather than the thing they just did. I do want to transition to the achievement goals. We were getting there. So if you want to go ahead and go to that next page, no, you're, you're good. Page four, but other questions or comments as well?
I have a question or a comment. Has has there been, and you guys are probably going to get to this. I I just, maybe I should wait till the end.
No, go ahead.
Is, has there been any opportunity to engage with like the city of Cedar Rapids to look at kind of some continuing pathways? I know that they're pursuing some scholarship opportunities. I don't know how robust they are or how many there are. Just wondering if they've been included in the conversation.
That's a great question in general about some of that junior, senior experience. We're drawing on from what we've already done. There's a lot to develop there yet. Right now, we're really focusing on that freshman sophomore experience and then knowing what we know about junior, senior to build more now that we have a counselor on board and she'll start effectively July 1. And things like that can really dig into that. So the city, I haven't done that. I don't know, Trace, if you have in the last year or so, but we haven't had that conversation yet. But we know we have had other conversations with city employees that are excited to help with whatever they can.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. We've, we've worked with the city of Cedar Rapids at Big for 11 years, but not that specific conversation.
So a couple of things I wanted to highlight with the goals. We wanted to hear from you about your goals and to see if they're represented here. And then the things that aren't, such as tracking how we're doing as a program to fulfill the needs of Cedar Rapids. I wanted to highlight the, every student graduating from high school is a goal and something we believe we'll achieve. Also that Adam highlighted the credit, earning two college credits at a minimum or professional certification as as they leave. One I wanted to highlight, and I highlighted this earlier today and I loved Braylon's conversation with SaAC. The 90% or above feeling a sense of belonging at City View. That is something that we think we can hit and we're confident we can hit. That is a goal and we're not just putting it on there. Our current high school average is 45%. And having been in a high school, I understand how difficult that can be. So developing that mindset around our staff and and the importance of connecting with every single individual child and helping to hear their voice and as they articulate their path in education, again, is a cornerstone of what we're doing. And that's why I think we can hit a much higher number there. And then some of the other things that we talked about is the five main industries of Cedar Rapids. To give you an idea, those are highlighted as bioscience, which we believe includes the medical fields in a variety of capacities, education, technology, logistics and warehousing. I shouldn't have started this, I'm going to miss one now. Advanced manufacturing and, oh, food processing, thank you. So what we want students to be able to see is all of the different careers that are involved in those different industry clusters so that they see what Cedar Rapids on the surface has to offer. The other thing, though, that is important, so we're saying every student's going to experience that freshman sophomore year. The other thing that's important that has been highlighted already by Director Merschrock is that students get to choose a different pathway if they're not interested in one of those. We think that is very important. Just like we think that if they choose a pathway junior year and they want to change, we're not going to tell them, nope, we said you're going to earn a certification, you got to keep going. These are kids and we want them to explore and get a better sense of what's out there and that's the ultimate goal.
So then how will you determine when they graduate? If they change it in midstream, like, like you said, a junior, they don't want to do it anymore, then?
They still will graduate by earning all their graduation requirements by the Cedar Rapids Community School District. So those 40 credit hours in a variety of different courses will still be their graduation metric. We just added another layer that we want to see them do.
This is the end.
Yeah. Well, no, I was just going to say the thing about it is being clear and upfront because it does represent some of the goals that we have earlier. When students even flow out of different programs, which is fine, they they should be able to do that, it makes it difficult for them to earn an industry certification. So knowing their end goal, right, like what they're trying to accomplish. Some kids, they just want to try a lot of different things. I think we're okay with that. But if they're looking, for example, the student that we had here, what was his name, Brock?
Brooks.
Brooks, he specifically said, I want to learn more about trades. We know he's trying to go and get a job, right? So we're probably trying to make sure we keep him on the path to making sure that he's certified and he can step right into work.
One of our partners nationally that we met with a little bit ago, and by partner, I mean another school that has a similar model that we were just sharing ideas. They said, you know, one of the things that we've told our kids is when they tell us we don't want to go to college, we say, well, it's fine, but you're not shutting the door yet, right? So it's those sorts of conversations like, well, you've got one more class for the certification, let's just finish. Knock that off your plate. You have it, you don't have to go that way. Those sorts of conversations are, will be important.
And just for clarity too, because sometimes people get this confused, but with the certification for most of them, they're going to be taking classes too, right? So even at the college level, they may not go on to four-year, but they will probably for sure have some classes at the two-year level.
Yeah, the Lynn Regional Center is one area that we have had multiple conversations with as well, including using their facilities for things like our science equipment because they they'll have some access that they think we can get in there to do. And the reason, again, we think that's important is because if we can get a student in their site sophomore year, then the idea of going there as a junior becomes easier because they see some faces. They know, they know what to do when they get in the door, those sorts of things. And that's why we want them to experience that type.
Can you share how engineering is shared in this five, these five main industries of Cedar Rapids?
You know, I can just from a personal experience. The food processing, I actually coached baseball with a guy who's an engineer. He was at ADM and it was, that's the food processing, right? So it's, again, the career clusters take different shapes throughout the different industries. So that's one way. The similarly, coding, I talked to Phil Westa from, I'm not sure how to pronounce his last name, so if I butchered that, I'm sorry. We talked the other day, he's the the executive director of the MedQ and he talked about their need for programmers in the hospitals. And so another example where we know students that want to code, but they don't always know what's out there for them. What's that mean? What's that look like as a job? So let's expose them to the different folks hiring in the community. And then as they develop that career cluster, they can still go that direction, knowing that this is an avenue they can go on.
Right.
Advanced manufacturing has tons of engineering jobs too.
Yep.
Right. Just that Raytheon is our largest employer, Collins or whatever, whatever the name is now.
Yeah.
Just to not overlook that resource because I, you know, I know they have a lot of interest, right? In 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 making sure that that they're fully staffed along their their different work groups.
I think too that the point we want to make sure is that these five main industries are identified by our Economic Alliance as high need. And so we need to, we need to be attentive to their needs. But there are so many others and we're not going to, the the five are the baseline, right? We want the kids to see Collins Aerospace, visit a power plant of Alliance, all those different kinds of things as well. But we want to make sure that we're supporting our city's economic development efforts with those five for sure.
Do you think that's clear in the messaging that people understand that it reaches outside of the five?
The five has really been developed intensely in the last couple of weeks. So we haven't had to to reach that yet, but it's a fair question that we'll need to make sure that we're clear on.
Yep. And then going back to what Director Merschrock said too, I like the idea of our community being involved with helping design that. But I also like the idea of having our students' passions and their interests driving that too. So as we understand what the kids are looking for, what these students are looking for, making sure that we're actually providing those opportunities for them as well. Because I think that's good, good feedback to the employers in the community. It's like kids are not interested in advanced manufacturing. Let me learn why, you know? I mean, it's, I appreciate the fact that we've got clusters in the state and certainly in our community. I want to drive to that, but really focusing on the students' passions and their interests, I think, is key.
We talk about, and this might be a little bit more district-related than City View-related, but we talk about closing the achievement gap at a higher rate. All students graduating from high school, big goals, right? We also want that at our other high schools. And so do we consider this a bit of a testing ground then for our high school, our other high schools as well?
Yes, and Adam, if you can please chime in? Absolutely. We really do see this as a prototype that we will utilize so that all of our students have the same experiences. It would also tie into our facilities master plan. The conversations that we're having now is like, how do we ensure that students have the opportunity to be exposed to the different areas that you're talking about, education? We should have an academy for education students. It's all across the country, there's no reason why we can't have it here. Engineering and technology, aviation, all of those different areas. So I think we'll learn some things here. We'll figure out how to get that information from students and where to drive our resources. I think the question will be, is, do we put all the same things at each of the high schools? Or do we have different offerings similar to what we have now? And so those will be more conversations to come. So the simple answer is yes.
She said it better than I will, but I would add, this is a primary function of the magnet schools in general. And as we reframe and repurpose those, that magnet vision, we were thinking about how we're learning lessons and feeding it back into our traditional schools. But this is a prime example of doing just that.
I wanted to, sorry, I got too excited about the next point.
Can I just say one more thing on that? The other interesting thing about this, so we get a chance to really, it's a, it's a small enough group where you can recruit teachers with a certain skill set, a certain passion around some of where the changes need to be. So when we start talking about project-based learning, competency-based grading, students being engaged in internships, apprenticeship, that is a huge paradigm shift for how we teach in our classrooms, okay? And so now when we have teachers on board that they're trained and they're able to kind of move that back, we could put an idea and a vision out there, but our staff, we have to come along with the ideas and concepts. So I think it's critical, and this team, they already know, we have to get this right in regards to understanding how it benefits kids. Because when kids are passionate, their attendance goes up. They come to school, they have, they're working towards something that they're interested in. They can see how it connects to the rest of their lives. And so I'm I'm very inspired by the opportunity, but there is a lot to learn here. So all the questions, please don't hold back. It's just, because we're going to miss something, we're going to keep learning and kind of adjusting as we go.
That is absolutely correct. If we go to page five quick, I wanted to highlight, Director Roundtree, you mentioned the need for more explicit conversations about diversity and equity. This is where we dig into that a little bit. One of the things that our goal will be is in those five industries we talk about, to have a diverse workforce that our students can interact with so that we're finding folks that are in those fields that look like our students and can talk with our students so that they see themselves. I know in my work, when I was supporting the academy on their board, one of the things that we heard from students was when they went on that trip in the summer and were able to go down to New Orleans and see somebody that looked like them, wear a suit and walk the streets as a banker, it blew their mind. They didn't, they weren't used to that, right? So helping to highlight those avenues in Cedar Rapids is a goal of ours and it's a stretch goal too because we need to get to know more folks. And so that's where we'll need help of who those folks are and we want that help sincerely. But that is absolutely how we intend to to tie some of that together.
Is your staff completely hired for the?
We, well, it depends on what we are allowed to hire yet. But as of now, we have four teachers that are hired. We have a special education posting and then a secretary posting currently. We're also, one of my, my, my joke, but honesty is we would like to hire an engagement specialist either this year or next.
But all the teaching positions are filled.
Yep.
Except special education.
Except special education. And next year, the plan is, and you can see this in the staffing plan, every year for the next two years, we'll hire four more as we add those teachers. So there will be new hiring positions that we will use the strategies that Dr. Grover talked about to try to get a more diverse staff because we see that as a need. We know it's a need and it'll be an area of focus for us.
It is one of our explicit goals as well. On page four with the community that, maybe not there, I'm sorry. On page four, with the community, that, maybe not there, I'm sorry. Yep, teacher capacity. The percentage of staff at City View reflecting diverse backgrounds and experiences will, will move up proportionally. So it is, it is an area that we know that, while we're super excited for the team we've hired so far, an area we missed the mark was on, lack of diversity. How are we on time, Adam? I'm not sure when we... Yep. Fair enough.
Other questions, maybe? Because they've had a chance to look at information.
I'm still on page five.
That's all right.
With student recruitment, and, and maybe this is related to student recruitment, but I think another important part of this is, is communicating to the public what our students are doing. So I'm just wondering, like, at the end of the first year, if there wouldn't be some sort of showcase or demonstration for the community of what the kids are doing?
Love that, that's a great idea.
Yeah, thank you. We've talked, we've talked through how we want that to look, that we do want some sort of capstone each year for students to be able to explain, yeah?
Yeah, I think that would, I, the community, I think, doesn't understand City View. So I think that would go a long way to educate people.
I think the capstones, certainly, but like even at open house, like closer to the beginning, and just, the sooner I think the community can meet the students and interact with them, and just learn about what they're looking for, I think, the more that we can get the community engaged in this. Certainly focusing on that capstone and what they accomplish, but I, I personally love just seeing, like, just that progress, right? So when you first meet a student, maybe, you know, the student that we saw earlier is unsure, you know, you come in at the end of the semester, and it's like all the experiences that they've had, and to be able to articulate that, I think, would be really powerful. So, you know, think about multiple engagements for the community.
One of the other ideas, the, the last one on here that I, I'm excited about, is the idea of a summer camp for kids in middle school, to get them exposed early, so they can have that same experience, and we can start to build recruitment pipelines as the kids go back into their traditional schools and say, hey, have you thought about? But that same idea of, let's, let's let them see it, feel it, talk to the people that are doing it, to get the excitement built.
With that, I know it's getting long, and you've had a chance to look at this, and we'll have more time to look at this. One other thing I want to highlight is number eight, and we've talked about this already, or page eight, I'm sorry. Where, this is one visualization at the bottom there, where we show students exploring those first two years, left-hand side, just kind of being an articulation of their grade, the, the middle there, the core academics, that we'll still hit those standards and we'll track those standards, so that we're able to, to show progress and to show parents how they're coming along on those standards, and make sure students understand how they're coming towards graduation. The amount of students that could articulate how they're doing towards graduation is fairly low, because they're not normally really engaged with that process. They just take the classes and move along. And so we want that, where they can articulate what they're doing, and how that's going, and how, how it's coming. And then on the right side, again, that, that when we say they're going to have these interactions in, in the major five industries, we mean not just the site visits and job shadows that we often think about, but a project-based learning opportunity with somebody in a different industry. That, that counts, that checks that box for us, because sometimes that's where the real meaningful networks start to, start to take shape.
The other thing I would call your attention to, and I think Dan's hit this before, but nine through 12 should become much more concentrated. So when we're igniting passions, that's exposure, right? And each year, you get a little deeper as you start to really understand your passion area, and pursue those credits and certification.
And I'm going to keep us moving, but feel free to jump in with any questions. If we go to the implementation plan, then on 18, I'm not going to draw your attention anything in, in particular here, but this is one thing that we're developing with our team right now. We know we have a lot of work to do, we're not, this is very, we're very aware of that. We've already had one four-hour work session with our team on a Sunday, they were all willing to come in, they were excited to come in, tells you a little bit about who we brought in, and there's another one in the works coming up here pretty soon. So in that, we are going to articulate, what is it we're going to hit really well in year one? Because I, I wanted to make it clear that all, we have these ambitious goals, we're not going to be great at all of them in year one, right? So what are the things we have to nail for ninth graders and 10th graders next year? That is what we're developing right now, and what we show a little bit with this implementation plan, of how does that phase out, year one to year two and so on? So we can eventually be where we want to be with this prototype, as Dr. Grover said. And then on page 21, we've talked about some of the feedback structures. The idea is to have the, and I, we already got some feedback that that should be called a council, because you are our board, you make those important decisions, this is an advisory, more of a council, and that, that holds weight depending on who you're talking to. So that's something that we will be changing. And then, like I said, if you have, Director Merschrock, if you have ideas of folks that would be good on this, a council serving in those roles that you mentioned, we'd love to hear the names. Not necessarily here, but share them with us, in case it doesn't work out.
I also think Teretroster would be an, an excellent resource. She's already on your council, and she'll have those connections within skilled trades to be able to make some recommendations.
Absolutely. We also see student leadership as a discovery, so I wanted to highlight that for a second. So when we talk about all these different ways kids can learn, we see a weekly meeting with student leadership to talk through some of the hurdles we have, talk through some of the data we have. Things like that is a way to, to certify learning. Again, there's reading there, there's discovery there, there's all sorts of opportunities. So we see that as one of our feedback groups, as well as a parent board of some capacity. We haven't asked yet, but I would hope Bridget would be part of our board as well, to talk more about the parent experience at City View, and what that looks like. So those are different, we have four main groups that we hope to get regular information from, as well as you all, and then also the Economic Alliance boards that will be wanting some updates on how's this going, what are we doing, and so on. The rest is staffing and budget, and just say yes to that, and we'll be good. No, I'm just kidding. Again, this is nothing in stone, but this is our, our belief of what we see coming next, that you all get to decide as we go. We really appreciate this opportunity, and this is the beginning of a dialogue. So like I mentioned, if there's things that still don't make sense to you, or things that you feel like you heard that isn't what we said, please reach out with those questions, because we want to help with that.
And I just want to say, I, I think the team, they had so many ideas and thoughts that they were already working on, they basically had a lot of it in their heads, but they have worked extremely hard over the last couple of weeks to kind of get everything down on paper in a very comprehensive way, so we know that this can be overwhelming, but they've been trying to respond to what they've been hearing from, at the board meetings, from parents, as we move forward. So, we would welcome any last final questions, or you want to email us. We will try to get a timeline together where we can come back and give you reports as we move forward. But I do think that this is a great step forward in regards to trying to get a holistic view. We should have brochures, marketing videos, and all of that coming soon, and so certainly we will keep you informed and engaged along the way.
Can you share in what way were students involved in the process? Have they provided feedback? Have they, like, in what way were students involved in conceptualizing and building this?
We had several students, former and current, in the concept design team a year and a half ago, give us some feedback. And then to, like Dan was saying, now that we have a student body, we can really engage them as we develop these things and try things out, to go, is this, is this working for you, is this not? So, I, I think you're going to see that student voice really amp up now that we have students.
We also held design days where we invited all the, the students that were signed up at that time and their families to come in and talk to us a little bit, and I think I shared this with you all before, but they talked a little bit about what do they expect out of a school, and how do they want to be treated, and how they want their son or daughter to be treated, or their child, excuse me. The, the, so, in those conversations, we also took the students over to a separate room with a teacher to talk through, like, what is it you want from this experience? You know, what are the, what are the discoveries? What are your interest areas? What are those things? So, we've, we've tried to capture their voice in those ways.
Thank you for including that.
Yeah, and that'll be a huge point, you know, our next Sunday meeting is to start to get those in front of teachers to say, here's what they're interested in, now let's go, here's your standards, here's what they're interested, let's design, let's get the, the curriculum set. So, ready?
I just want to respond to another piece of feedback. We ran the numbers today, we've recruited eight more students from the last time we've seen you, and we are just a point and a half from proportionality in terms of the demographics. So we're making progress in terms of the student recruitment as well, and what our student body will look like. So we're excited about that as well.
So you know what my question is? Oh, you want me to ask it? How many black kids are in that age? Or students of color? Was that, is four? Okay, we have, have, okay, very good.
Maybe one last thing I'd like to share, just to put some context to it, is I, I have the good fortune of traveling around the country. I have, for the last 10 years, visiting highly innovative places, and so the, much of what we are designing isn't just out of our head. I've seen it work in other places, put it in the context here, and at, at the schools I've visited, especially the, the ones here in the last year, without exception, everyone has led their district in achievement scores, graduation rates, sense of belonging, all of those important measures, lower discipline rates. So this isn't, this isn't just some crazy idea. There is solid evidence around the country that putting kids in these kind of learning situations makes a difference, and I just think we're going to do it better than they have.
And this isn't 100% brand-new to us. I mean, we've had Iowa big, and, you know, I can speak firsthand with my own kid that that was a, a really engaging path, and I'm already seeing it pay off for her in college right now. So this isn't starting from complete scratch here. We, we do know what we're doing, right? Like, I, I have complete faith that we know what we're doing here, it's just a matter of putting it into a practice at scale right now that...
Any other last thoughts, questions?
I'm excited.
Me, too.
That's my last thought.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.